This is now six o'clock.
Recording in progress.
And we will now begin the study session to discuss the homestead issue and HopeSource updates. So I'll turn this over to our city manager, Allison Williams.
Good evening. Our city council, you have been asking about some of the issues. You can't hear me? Is that better? Okay, we'll keep it close. So yes, our chief tonight will provide you with an overview of the Homestead Act and the issues surrounding the RVs and the vehicles on the streets and some options for you for potential direction to staff. And then we have Brittany Bouchari, did I say that correctly? Yes, the Regional Director for HopeSource here to provide an update on their programs. So we'll go ahead and get started.
Yeah, there it is.
We're good. So you've all been given this ahead of time, so I'll breeze through it and then if you have questions, you can ask. Page two, you'll see the references. I will tell you, the Municipal Research and Services Center, MRSC, they have a, and I mentioned this in the document, they have a toolkit that deals with homelessness. It is a pretty in-depth, actually, so Ben, if I want to pull that up. Okay, let me just show you what it looks like real quick. I put it on a thumb drive so you could see it. Again, this is a great document. It's very, I mean, there's 60 pages in it. It covers anything homeless-related with great advice for municipalities to look at so that we are making good decisions. So, a lot of what I use is going to come out of here. If you get a chance, I would suggest that you pull this up, take a look at it, because it's a, again, it's one of those documents that they put out there to help cities make good decisions so that we don't get ourselves in trouble. So let me go back to slideshow. Okay. And then the two court cases that I'm going to reference are the Boise case and then the recent Seattle Long case. Many of you probably remember, I don't know that anybody here was on the council at the time, but back in 2018, when that Boise decision came out, we had, we were inundated with homeless that started living in our parks. If you remember right, we had a lot of them living on the fill. We had somebody actually on the north end of the fill. This park, Civic Park behind us, was the most highly populated park with our homeless. I think at one time, we counted about 18 tents in there. And so, in order to strengthen our ordinances on camping in parks, we created the sleep center, which we currently have. That alleviated the parks, the camping in parks issue that we have. Now, we still have tents around the city. They're not in public areas, they're mainly on private property, and we moved them along as the private property owners ask us to. So, the other case that I'm going to refer to tonight is the Long versus Seattle case. This is where the Homestead Act came up. Mr. Long's vehicle was towed by Seattle PD after being told he needed to move. He was living in his vehicle. They towed it. He ended up with towing bills, a towing bill and storage fees. The courts came out, the original court sided with the city of Seattle, and then it was appealed. And then the State Supreme Court came out and ruled that impoundment and storage fees, well, actually, they sided with Mr. Long. And there was a lot to siding with that, but what came out of it is, is that impounding and storage fees were excessive and violated his constitutional rights against the cruel and unusual punishment. They brought up the Stone Homestead Act. Now, I will say this, the city of Seattle did not, they impounded his vehicle, but they did not get rid of it. They didn't auction it off, they didn't destroy it, they didn't permanently take it away from him. The courts ruled in the case, had they gotten rid of it, the Homestead Act would have applied. Homestead Act would have applied, but because they didn't auction it off, that wasn't addressed in this decision by the courts. But they said that if that happened, that that would more than likely apply, and that would come out in any future case. So, I talked about the Boise decision already, so you'll see that. That's when we created the sleep center. MRSC, when you go to the toolkit, specific, now, this is specific to RVs, okay? Gives options for cities. And right there, you'll take a look, and like I said, you guys have all seen this. Review parking ordinances for enforcement. Designate a safe parking area is a suggestion to remove them illegally. And here's what I liken this to. I liken this to the sleep center. We created the sleep center. It gave us the ability to take people from parks and move them to the sleep center. And that prohibited them then from camping in parks. This is, the safe parking concept is kind of the same thing. You create an area that you can have these vehicles park in, you move them to that parking area, and that is the only area that they can have. So, that's what I've kind of likened this to on the Boise side, is it gives them that space. Number three, this is the one that kind of worries me on the law enforcement side, and that is, is limit enforcement of vehicles suspected as residences. If they're living in there, taking that away from them, I worry can be somewhat problematic. And I'll go through, we can do it, and I'll give you the circumstances with which we can do it, but you're taking away their home, you're taking away their property, you're taking away all the items within that home that they're living on. So, that's why it says limited enforcement of suspected residences. Consider their circumstances and ability to pay. If you go down, if the city chooses to impound vehicles, use as residents, avoid any action that looks like we're going to auction it, because that's when that Homestead Act applies. If debt is collected, it'll trigger the Homestead Act, that's where that auctioning it off is. And treat any car as a residence. Before we tow cars, and we do occasionally tow cars, the first question asked is, take a look inside and make sure that it doesn't look like somebody's living in. You can tell. If there's clothes in there, if there's old food in there, if it looks like they've used in the backseat as like a bed, you know, pillows, blankets, things like that, then we kind of take more of a hands-off approach and slow down a little bit because we just don't want to get into the, we don't want to get into a legal issue where we take somebody's home, and then we're having to face that issue. So. And then the last is review city finesse fees and ordinances to make sure that, under the Eighth Amendment, we're protected against the excessive fine piece. So, on to the next slide, and that is the safe parking concept. And you've probably seen some agencies, some cities, not just in our area, but around, across the state, have created these safe parking areas. It's a temporary off-street parking area where these motorhomes, travel trailers and vehicles can park, get some off-city streets. Again, you can go down through this, safe parking areas typically hosted on land owned by a government entity, the religious organization or nonprofit. The Boise decision prohibited, you can have the sleep center, but it prohibits the requirement of a religious, you know, some religious content. You can't ask somebody to participate in a religious function or something like that. If you do, it kind of negates the sleep center. You can have that religious component, but you can't force somebody to do it. And that's, so that's a little bit touchy right there. Safe parking areas or host manages day-to-day activity. Communities restrict safe parking areas to certain zones, and then site consideration, water, power, sewer. So, just some considerations. I mentioned the Long decision, and kind of some of the issues that we run into if we, when we're dealing with these RVs. So, there's really three options for the city, basically. And that is listed here. You either leave them where they're at, leave them alone, let them do what they're doing. I will tell you that if, obviously, and for those that travel outside of Moses Lake, if you go into other cities, you will see trailers, motorhomes, and cars all over the place. I spent a lot of time in Seattle, and they are everywhere. Now, I will also say this, I spent a week in California at Christmas time between San Diego, Anaheim, and LA, and same issue down there. I mean, they are all over the place. So that is one option. The second option is, is create a safe parking lot. Have a place where these rigs can go. We can, I'm going to say the word "force," but I think we can, and I don't know that we can force them, but we can, that's an option, and say, this is the only option you have. You're either going to park it here, or you're going to have to move and go somewhere else. The third is, and this is the one that kind of scares me the most of the three, but I'm going to throw it out there. We have the legal right to tow their rigs. If they're violating a parking ordinance, we have the right to tow it. We cover the impound fees. We can chart, we cover the storage fees, although we can charge a reasonable fee, which I think Catherine said would probably be five bucks or so a day, because that has to be reasonable based on the circumstances, based on their finances. If they don't claim it, then it's our responsibility to figure out what we're going to do with it. And because if we try to auction it off, the Homestead Act applies, and so then we'd probably have to either fight it in court or give it back to them, as my guess would just give it back to them. So, what do you do with their rigs if we tow them and then we've got them? My issue is, is one, you know, paying the cost to tow them and towing them to our property, you know, we're out a thousand bucks maybe, but then what are we going to do with it when it's in storage? And some of these rigs, I don't know that, what they have inside, we want in our, on our property, if that makes sense, or, you know, in our storage unit. And so, we'd have to deal with that. We have a motorhome actually right now up at our lot, but that was because somebody passed away in it, and it was parked and it needed to be moved, and they had an animal inside, so we had to tow it to get it off where it was at, and we're stuck with it. I mean, it's sitting up there. I don't know what we're going to do with it, to be honest with you. And so, that's where I go back to, this is an option that we have. We could tow them, but then we're trying to find a place to put them, and then we're on the hook with them after that. And so, that's basically the three options that you have, is leave them alone, create a place to park them, or impound them, and then deal with them after that. And so, I would encourage you to go to the MRSC toolkit. There's a whole section on living in vehicles, there's a whole section on homelessness. You can read through that, and it's going to give you the same information, because most of this information I took came from there. So, questions? I kind of bust through that.
Chief here, if you would just add, back in 2020, 2019, when we enacted the regulations to clear out the parks, the MRSC toolkit spells out the process by which we have to go through the clearing out of camps.
Yeah, so, they have a whole section on taking their property. So, when we started enforcing the camping in the parks, we had to post every one of the sites with a 72-hour notice that they were going to, they were basically being evicted, they had to move their stuff. Anybody that didn't, we had to go in there and clean up their stuff, and then store their property for 60 days. We had to put, because they left, we had to, we basically, I posted where the notice was at, that we had their property, they had 60 days to claim it, that it was being held at the police department. At the time, the city rented one of those, actually, I think we purchased it, one of those large containers that sat behind the police department for several months. We packaged all their stuff up as best we could. Most of it was, we just threw it in the tent, and then we took the tent and put it inside. And then we put, you know, the date, the time, and who we thought owned it, and then we held it. And then after the 60 days, then we had to dispose of all the property. Same thing's going to apply here if they have property. And, you know, people say that, you know, what they've got outside is garbage. If you go to the tent, the tent that is the closest to Goodwill, they have a large pile of stuff out in front of their place that is covered with a gray tarp. Now, that may be garbage to us, but it may be property to them. And so, if it has any sort of value to it, we've got to keep it. And so, MRSC's, the toolkit, shows, that tells you that you've got to hold that property for a certain amount of time, and have it available during business hours for people to come pick it up, and then if they don't claim it, then after those 60 days, we get rid of it. So, we would have to do the same thing with these if we were going to tow them, and then do that. I'm also going to add one more thing, and there's a couple of pictures here at the end, and again, you've seen the photos. I know pretty much what's going on in the city, I think 90%, 95% of the time, maybe more. I know where all these trailers are at, because I drive around. When I'm not doing anything, I'll get in the car and just go cruise the city and see what's going on. We have 10 RVs, actually 11, one moved in on, next to Home Depot on, over the weekend. So, we actually have seven right now by Home Depot. We have 11 RVs in the city that are parking on the street that are considered residences. So, it's, I mean, it's visible on Central, but other than that, there's not a lot of RVs throughout the city. There's seven on Central, there's three at the end of Longview Miller, and then there's one out on Montana Street. Honestly, one moved in in my neighborhood yesterday morning, on Nelson, right at the bottom of the hill by Lakeway, and it was gone today. So, I don't know where they went, but they were, and they were only there one night, and it looked like it was more than likely a homeless, just because I can tell, but they were gone within 24 hours. And again, I'm not quite sure where they went, but there's, so there's not a ton of them out there, but they're in visible spots. So.
Allison, do you have anything else? Excuse me, David. Anything else besides that? Okay. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Kevin, can you clarify a little better what the safe parking area would look like in our town?
I, I...
So, we don't have any real thoughts yet?
No, that would be a decision for the council to, if you want to go down that road, then I think the city manager has a plan for probably that. So, for me, what it looks like is a flat piece of ground that we can have RVs go park at.
Thank you.
Yeah. Councilmember Coggin.
Are you aware of any lawsuits and the dollar amounts?
Any what?
Any lawsuits where cars have been towed, and the government was sued?
I'm not, but I don't know anybody that's towing them either.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, is it an actual threat of a financial problem, or is it just somebody says we can't do that?
To...
I mean, as far as if we towed something, and the whole, you know, is somebody going to sue us for removing their car? Are you aware of cities that have done that and have been sued, and what were the amounts of those suits?
So, the only one I know of is the Long case. He ended up winning that, and I think he got a pretty good chunk of change out of that, for that case, which is, I think, why municipalities now are afraid to do much with it, because they saw what happened with his, and they don't want to go down that road. Now, I know, like, I think it was East Wenatchee, they were actually paying to tow RVs to the safe parking area. So, again, they were paying the cost to have it moved to that safe park, but they weren't taking their rigs. They were just saying, we're moving you to another location, and we're going to cover the cost, and once it's there, you've got to stay there. But they weren't towing it to take it away, if that makes sense.
Yeah. But I was just wondering if we talk about a potential suit, if there actually have been any, and they've been significant numbers, or it's just a smokescreen did not deal with it?
No, I think with the Long case, I think municipalities are just worried about going down that road. There are organizations in Washington State that are actively helping in these types of cases with our homeless population. ACLU is a big one. And so, if they find a case, they're willing to take it. And that's what happened with Long, is they picked that case up and took it all the way up to the Supreme Court, because they have the resources to do that. So.
And in light of time, we wanted to provide this to you, provide the options to you, and then it dovetails with the conversation later on the agenda in regards to the sleep center. And we have Brittany Bouchari here with HopeSource to give a quick update on the sleep center statistics.
Good afternoon, good evening, everyone. Let me get this keyed up. So, I have learned that not everyone in Moses Lake is familiar with HopeSource, so just to kind of give a brief overview of who we are. We were a community action agency that was established in the 1950s in Kidattas County. We have come to Grant County about eight years ago with our homeless veteran program. We now have a youth program that focuses on homeless youth from 18 to 24, and we have a piece of the consolidated homeless grant as well. We operate the sleep center, which is going to be the majority of what I'm going to talk about this evening, as well as an enhanced shelter that's on Pioneer. It was an old motel that we've renovated into enhanced shelter units. So, I just kind of want to start off by talking about the cost of homelessness. So, somebody who is chronically homeless averages a public taxpayer dollars of about $35,000 a year. A cost for one bed night at the sleep center is $45. Comparing that to a cost of a night in jail is $70. We were able to serve 340 unique individuals at the sleep center since our inception, and when you look at the total cost of the program, it has cost about $775 per client. I think, I'm actually going to go back here, I just also want to talk about kind of the concept of the super users. So, if you're going to look at the top 10% of people who are utilizing public services, then you're looking at over $100,000 per person being utilized in public services to be able to serve that one individual. So, options like the sleep center, or if you're looking even full package, supportive housing, costs about $12,000 per person per year, and that person is permanently housed. So, therefore, not costing taxpayer dollars. So, talking about the sleep center, so the sleep center, like Chief here mentioned, it is a low-barrier shelter. So, to be able to enforce the Boise decision, we can't have barriers for entry. We do have rules that they are required to follow. If you want a place to sleep, you've got to follow our rules. We do kind of timeouts. If people are not breaking the rules, that's been 24 to 72 hours out. But we don't require program participation, so if they don't want to participate in any of our housing programs, we can't require that. We don't require financial services, we don't require sobriety. We do ask that it's not, that clients are not using on the facility. If you, you know, do what you do outside of these walls, that's your prerogative. We can't impose that barrier, otherwise that removes our ability to enforce the Boise decision. We also don't require any financial assistance from the clients. Guests are able to access the sleep center from 6:00 PM until 8:00 in the morning. You can enter the sleep center from any time from 6:00 until 10:00 PM, and that's kind of the lights out. And we have overnight security that comes in and ensures that everything is safe and doing what it's supposed to be doing. The purpose of the sleep center really is to provide a safe place to sleep, and that's kind of where it stops. We are able to provide, you know, clean, safe restroom, shower, sleeping facilities, and because we participate in HMS, we do a needs assessment for every client that comes into the sleep center, which means that we will look at all the aspects of their life, and we'll make related referrals. So, if they identify disability, or substance use, or employment needs, then we'll make referrals to relevant agencies here in Grant County. So, the benefits, so we talked about it a little bit, the enforcement piece. So, the sleep center allows for the city to enforce its camping ordinance, and that way, you don't find people living on public property. There are, there's always that issue in private property. We do outreach three times a week. We kind of know all the camps, we're very familiar with the homeless community here. We encourage them to reach out and to engage in services. Ultimately, it's housing choice, they choose to move forward or not. Other benefits, so it's health and safety. Due to the harsh conditions of living outdoors, the average lifespan of an unsheltered homeless individual is 17 and a half years shorter than everyone else in this room that is not experiencing homelessness. There was a study in Australia, they looked about 15 years of sheltered versus unsheltered homeless data, and it adds about four years to somebody's life to be in a shelter, even if they're in a shelter a short period of their time. Also, the benefit is cleanliness for the community. I know that there's, this is a controversial topic, but we removed more than 80 tons of homeless-related garbage collected and properly disposed of with the sleep center. That's garbage that would have otherwise ended up in your town. We also have the ability to provide daily storage. So, each guest at the sleep center has a storage tote, which is a 96-gallon tote with a lock on it. They can leave their belongings there during the day, so they're not having to pack them around with them during the day when they're not utilizing the sleep center. And this is also things that would otherwise be visible in the community. So, kind of talking about successes that we've seen at the sleep center, I think a huge success is that we have provided more than 5,700 safe bed nights with the sleep center. We have moved 22 individuals through our kind of pipeline of services. So, the sleep center is a really important key to bring somebody from a point where they're unsheltered homeless, they're not accessing any services. We're able to daily make those kind of touch points and offer services that are available. We've moved 22 people from the sleep center to our enhanced shelter up on Pioneer, and of those 22 individuals, they've all received, are all been placed in permanent housing, and been able to maintain that housing for a period of six months. So, it's huge for somebody who's experiencing chronic homelessness. And this is a picture of our most recent success story. Mark is a disabled veteran. He lost his home in a divorce, could not afford rental on his disability, and became homeless, and utilized the shelter for over a year before he decided to engage in services, and he moved to the sleep center, and within 90 days was placed in permanent housing. And he is doing that without a subsidy. So, we had placed him in, we helped him get placed in affordable housing that is sustainable, long-term, ongoing. And again, we just touched on this earlier, but we do a needs assessment for every individual that comes into the sleep center. So, whenever they come in, they do an intake, we get demographic information, we learn a little bit about their story, that allows us to make informed referrals. We've served 340 unique guests. 70% of the guests that utilize the sleep center are disabled. 30% report mental health disorders, and only 17% report having substance use disorder. Over 60% of the people who've utilized the sleep center have no income, so no way of obtaining housing. And that's, I guess, that's it. That's all I have to share. Any questions?
We do have a couple minutes, if any council members have questions or comments. Deputy Mayor Martinez?
So, check-in is between 6:00 and 10:00, is that correct? And then the HopeSource staff leaves the facility, and then there's security?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Right now, it's being managed by MLPD. Thank you guys very much, you're amazing.
All right, thank you.
I'd just like to comment that when this program was put into place, the council's goals were a hand up instead of a hand out. The idea was to move them on out of, you know, the temporary filters and get them stable enough into more permanent housing. So, I think I can speak for the council that that remains the goals of the program.
Yeah. And, I mean, it's a small program, but we employ nine local individuals on a full-time basis at the sleep center. So, that's been a great success for the community. All right, well, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have two minutes until the regular council meeting begins, so make sure you're in your seats and ready to go at 6:30.
There's a seat up front.
We need more than one bathroom.
Trying to get out of here, Mike.
Oh, let's make it a, let's make it a ten.
Thank you, Brittany. Thank you.
Oh, good dog.
Ellen and I went to the tap house, and there's been dogs, and it's loud, and Ellen's going, "Are they supposed to have dogs?" And I don't think they are supposed to have dogs. Yeah. And so, he... And so he's like, um, we're both like, oh, well, you know, they do it on the west side.
They have catteries, those.
Yeah, that's right, with cats.
A question for Teresa at the help.
Well, they said, our health district said it was okay, so, yeah. Okay, so everybody from last night came, yep. It's many of the same people, yeah.
They want to administer to their. They want to administer to the homeless. They want to take advantage of that 2020 legislation that gives insurance.
Oh, here comes a, someone who looks like.
She looks like she was.
I was thinking she was a homeless person, but.
Apparently it's big silver hair.
Oh, okay.
Big hair.
I had that in the 80s.
Yeah, a few of us tried to have that in the 80s, but were not successful. My hair was not able to do big hair.
Oh, I had a burn. And I had the bangs.
Not in there, you're going to remind, but are you going to remind them, no conversations, to take them out?
The time is now 6:32. We'll begin the Moses Lake City Council meeting Tuesday, March 28th. Citizens who'd like to address the council must complete a blue speaker card. You'll find that out in the vestibule and give it to our city clerk, Debbie Burke. You'll be called on at the appropriate time to make your comments. Cell phones should be turned to silent mode while the meeting is in progress. If there's any students in the audience and we're not done by 9 o'clock, we will take a short break to sign your forms so that you can go home. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Thank you, Mayor Myers. Councilmember Fancher?
Present.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Present.
Councilmember Madewell?
Present.
Councilmember Scogg?
Present.
Councilmember Eck?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Martinez?
Present.
And Mayor Myers?
Present. May please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does any council member wish to move a consent agenda item to a business item for individual discussion and vote, or make other modification for tonight's agenda? I would like to make one suggestion. Due to the amount of speakers that would like to speak on the item, I would like to move item number three to item number two, which would be the Sleep Center location, and switch that with the DOH associates. If the council's okay with that, I would accept a motion.
No move.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The council invites citizen comments to hear from the public on matters before the council or relevant to the council's business. The council values free expression of all points of view as an important democratic value in this community. Each speaker will be allowed a maximum of five minutes. If others have already expressed your views, you may simply indicate that you agree with the previous speaker. Any of you who were here at our last meeting, we went till a little after 10:00, so we're going to try to keep this one a little bit shorter. So if somebody's already stated that viewpoint, then just say, "I agree with them." The council expects respect for those who have positions with one may disagree, so debate or interactive discussions are strictly prohibited. Please address your comments to the council and not to staff or the audience. Councilmember requests staff research comments received for potential future action. And please take private conversations outside. When I call on you to speak, please begin with stating your name and city of residence for the record. We have two non-agenda items that we'll take right now, and then the rest we'll handle at the agenda items. So Lori Crisculo, I'd like to speak on overpopulation of pets. Step up to the mic, please. Thank you.
My name's Lori Crisculo, I'm from Moses Lake.
Just go ahead.
All right, this is a really new situation for me, sorry. Okay, so on February 18th of this year, I was getting coffee at Starbucks on Stratford Road. As I was pulling into the parking lot, I noticed a vehicle backed up to Stratford Road across from Taco Bell selling puppies out of the back of the vehicle. Then I noticed another vehicle parked near the car wash next to Walmart, selling puppies out of the back of their vehicle. Before I was through the drive-through at Starbucks, there was a total of six vehicles, people selling puppies out of the back of their cars. These are backyard breeders. Backyard breeders have no regard for these pets. They think they'll make a few bucks. They have no clue what they're in for, the cost, the mess, what is really required to bring up these pets as a healthy pet. They get tired of the whole operation and put them up for sale way too young for proper health and behavior in a dog. They shouldn't leave their litter until they're at least eight weeks. 12 weeks is better. Backyard breeders don't vet the buyers, they just want to get rid of the puppy, make a quick buck, or be done with it, and be done with it. This whole situation upset me so much, it upset me because this is one of the major causes of pet abandonment. Anyone buying a pet in a parking lot in the newspaper or social media hasn't thought about everything involved in taking on this pet. They don't know anything about the breeding, if it's truly healthy, they don't know if it's socialized, how it's been kept. They don't think about the cost that is coming their way, the spang and neutering of the pet, the cost, veterinary costs, if it's been inbred to the point of having no hip sockets, or any number of other health issues. They haven't thought about their landlord, and if they can afford the cost of the deposit, or the landlord is going to allow the pet. They haven't thought about when this puppy is teething, how much furniture or clothing will be destroyed. They haven't considered training, or food costs, or who is going up, who's going to clean up after the pet. At some point, their landlord will tell them to get rid of the pet, or a risk eviction, or the person will tire of the destruction, or the poop, or the cost, or the pet is pregnant, and the person doesn't know what else to do. The person thinks, "I'll just take this to Grant County Animal Outreach." They don't realize that they're overpopu, or they're full already. They can't take anymore in, as are all of the other rescues that are in the area. Full, we can't take anymore. They don't realize that, let me see, they don't realize that all the other rescue groups are full too, so what does this person do? They dump the pet. I have witnessed this too many times. I recently spent a week trying to track down a dog who had been dumped. I finally got ahold of her last Saturday. She was emaciated, a leg injury, she'd been nursing pups, no chip or collar. This is another problem with backyard breeders. They breed the dog a few times, then dump her on the general public. A friend of mine brought a kitten whose eyes were glued shut from infection. I got a weight on him as I was trying to clean the kittens, the pus out of his eyes, and administer medication to his eyes. His blood sugar dropped so low that he just went, he just collapsed in my hands. He was dying. We gave him a tiny bit of Caro syrup, brought him around, and started syringe feeding him water, Caro syrup, little bits of food. We managed to save the eyes. He was adopted. However, the people that adopted him are strapped with the financial cost of this kitten who acquired disease from the colony that he came from, that he's, you know, and it shortens his life, as well as exorbitant costs to the adopters. I'm, I'm here, I'm so disgusted with so many of the human beings in this county for their disregard for these creatures. I'm disgusted with my city for not doing better. I'm here to make some suggestions as to how to fix this deplorable situation. This is animal abuse, and it's illegal. I work with a couple of different organizations in the area, one of them is ARFs, and just today, the secretary, who is always on the move, she went to pick up a dog that is 13 years old, and it was, they were preparing, I don't know all the details, all I know is that the dog is 13 years old, has cancer, needs to be euthanized, but she's pregnant. This is disgusting.
If I can interrupt just real quick, if you can get to your solutions, we'd love to hear those.
I have, what I'm asking for is a zero-tolerance municipal code for the sales or gifting of any and all pets. Require sellers to provide proof of written permission to be on private property. I don't think these people had permission to be at the, in the, okay, sorry. Require sellers to provide proof of dog licensing for all dogs in their care, six months of age and older, which is Moses Lake Municipal Code 6.04.020. Cats need to be included in all these pet municipal codes. There are massive amounts of colonies that, if you haven't seen them, you need to open your eyes. Any and all persons wanting to sell or gift pets of any kind within the city of Moses Lake shall have a business with the city and shall have written permission from the property owner where the pet is being sold. Require sellers to have registered business with the Department of Revenue. Enforce Municipal Code 5.04. There are state laws and regulations. I have other suggestions, but it's more at a county level than a city level. On, a week ago Sunday, I was unable to get this dog some help, because Grant County Animal Outreach was full, and they had told, somebody had told the police department not to take any more dogs in for three months. We're full, they're full, what are we going to do? Maybe somebody else needs to take over the animal control situation other than Grant County Animal Outreach. I've requested their financials for the last three years, because I'm not sure what the heck is going on over there. We've been able to move 600, in '22, we moved 600, close to 600 dogs and cats through adoption. I don't know what the deal is going on there. So anyway, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to say, I'd like to acknowledge Commissioner Jones and thank Grant County. On April 14th, they're holding a facilitated meeting between all of the animal interests, recognizing that this is a large issue. And as you all know, we're dealing with a facility that needs significant attention that's been long overlooked, and so we look forward to that mediated discussion.
I'd also like to suggest maybe your Public Safety Committee discuss some of these suggestions, and see if there's anything that maybe we can do as a city. Thank you.
I have some literature also, if you're interested, I can hand that out to you.
If you want to maybe give it to the city manager, and then she can.
Happy to do that.
Thank you. Next. Don Temple to speak on the Maple Drive construction. Name and city of residence, please.
My name is Don Temple. I've happened to live here in the area since 1976. And for some reason, the people that are building the homes out there on Grape Drive are great. All of a sudden, there seems to be a road that leads up the hill to the property behind them. It just materialized. We turn, left off a grape, on a grape drive, and those people that are buying those $300,000 to $400,000 homes, I don't think they know that the city is going to allow commercial trucks to go up that road to the property behind them. And I think that somebody needs to either inform the people that are buying those homes. I'm all for, I'm all for progress, don't get me wrong. But when you backdoor road up a hill, because they have to put a water line up to that property behind the Hayden Homes, I understand that. But when you have to take and backdoor so that somebody could profit at the top of that hill, I think that's just outrageous. I mean, I've seen enough of it over on the coast. I was from Seattle area, I've seen the backdoor situation over there, where a piece of property gets kind of landlocked, and then they build a road, and all of a sudden, the property now is no longer landlocked. But who pays for this? Those people that are buying those homes out there on Grape Drive have no idea what you people are allowing to do, because it's going to be commercial traffic, because I've been watching that road being built up there, and I don't know exactly who owns that property. I have an idea, and I have an idea that it's the Aspie Group. Because a couple of years ago, I happened to live in Gateway Estates, and we fought them coming in to Gateway Estates behind us, because there's only one road into Gateway Estates, and that's off of Harris Road, and it's a chip seal road. The asphalt stops at the next intersection off of Patton Boulevard. And as far as I knew, when my wife and I bought that property in 1999, we were in the county. When the Aspie Group came aboard this town, all of a sudden, we wound up in the city. Nobody asks us, we had all the amenities. We had city sewers and everything else. I've been out there for 20-some years now, and I get kind of tired of seeing somebody backdoor a road up through, when they, when their lawyer stood right here in this city council and said there was an easement that paralleled Highway 17, off of Grape Drive up parallel to Highway 17, to that property. And if any of you've been out there on that, where that old motel is, you realize that I don't know what it would cost to actually put a road in up there, but it's going to get awfully expensive if they had to put it out of their pockets so somebody else can profit. I don't, I don't live there. I've only got a couple more years and I'll be gone. But the rest of these people that are coming in with their families are really not going to appreciate having commercial truck traffic go up Grape Drive so somebody can make a dollar. Thank you.
Any comments or questions from council?
The Planning Commission, I don't know who is in charge of Planning Commission, but all of a sudden, you guys can send out these notices that people are wanting to rezone their property. And this property that I'm talking about was trying to be rezoned for commercial and residential. When I say "commercial," that means body shops, that means other things. So the Planning Commission, they handed us a notice about what was going to happen. So thank you for your time.
Councilmember Scogg?
Mr. Temple, I appreciate your comments, and I think we have to be very careful that we don't lose the flavor of Moses Lake.
Well, sir, like I said, I'm all for progress.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Moving on to the mayor's report, we have Matt Pollak here from the Community Coalition Event. Your name and city of residence?
Yeah, hi, Matt Pollak. I live down in Pelican Point, so I'm not exactly in the city, but I'm right outside city limits. city limits. I'm here for the Moses Lake Community Coalition. And we're an organization that works on, um, youth substance abuse prevention and mental health. Tomorrow, we are having a town hall on substance abuse that's gonna be right here from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. And, um, it, it kind of provides an opportunity for the community to come together and discuss some of the issues that either we're concerned about or we're seeing in the community and give our coalition some opportunities to address the issues that everybody's concerned about, particularly with substance abuse. You know, we've heard a lot about, um, I, I was in a meeting yesterday where we heard a lot about, um, substance abuse leading to homelessness and what the laws are to be able to deal with that issue when people are experiencing that. And what, what our coalition is focused on is preventing that in the first place. We wanna make sure that, that, you know, as a community, we can have everybody live healthy, safe, um, productive lives. And I think, you know, we've got a great opportunity here now while this is a big issue in our community to be able to come together and discuss that. And, you know, I don't have all the answers. I don't think anybody in the coalition does, or even the coalition as a whole does. But, um, I'd like to invite everybody here to come to that event tomorrow, share your opinions. You know, maybe it could be something that really makes a good difference. So, just wanted to let everybody know that.
Thank you. Was there any questions or comments on this item? Thank you so much, Matt. Moving on to the Parks and Rec Cultural Services Board appointments, the city received a total of seven applications for the vacancies on the Park Recreation and Cultural Services Board. Parks Board is limited to up to two members from the UGA and we currently do have two members that are in the UGA. Board chairperson Charlene Rios and Director Doug Coots interviewed, uh, three candidates that fit, uh, within the application. Um, and currently I'm gonna recommend to appoint, uh, Isaac Bubba Valdez and Rebecca Johnson to, for the unexpired terms that will end or request reappointment on December of 2023 and December of 2024. Do you need a motion? We have to do these separate, so first, uh, for Isaac Valdez.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. And then, uh, recommend the appointment of Rebecca Johnson. Have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. I didn't see any. Does council wish to have any business brought to a future meeting? Hearing none, we can move on to the city manager's report.
Good evening. Chief here requested time with our sheriff, Crete, to provide a couple of recognitions
Thank you, council, for having me today. Uh, for those that don't know me, I'm Joe Crete. I am your sheriff here for Grant County. Thank you for the opportunity today to allow me to present two awards that are very near and dear to my heart. I'd like to talk about an event back in July 10th of 2022 when deputies from our office were involved in a pursuit that a shooting was also involved in. We had a couple of Moses Lake Police Officers that completely forgot about the safety of their lives and jumped right in to help and support our agency, which happens daily. Our, our agency and Moses Lake Police Department have such an amazing partnership that we've had for years, since I was a patrol deputy years ago. I cherish that partnership and on July 10th, that's exactly what we had from Corporal Burcher and Corporal Mingus that day. Um, I'd like to just read some comments that I wrote down, uh, in regards to the awards we'd like to present from the sheriff's office to the two corporals today. For Moses Lake Police Corporal Josh Buscher, we'd like to present him today with the Valor Award for his quick response to the July 10th, 2022 officer-involved shooting. Corporal Burcher's timely and decisive pursuit intervention quickly ended an ongoing threat to other law enforcement officers and the public. And that was a nomination by one of the peers in our agencies, one of our sergeants, recognizing our outside partners that we have in our community. So, I'm, I'm extremely proud of that, that our, the teamwork that our patrol staff has with our partnering agencies. So, uh, the second award is a meritorious award for Moses Lake Corporal Yanni Mingus for his quick response to the officer-involved shooting. Corporal Mingus did not hesitate to quickly respond to a critical incident to assist a partnering agency placing itself directly in harm's way to assist in apprehending a known violent offender. The example set by these Moses Lake Police Corporals of teamwork and professionalism is outstanding. So, I would like to offer my deepest thank yous to the, to the council as well, the two corporals we have here, uh, chief here as well. Um, thank you so much to your agency and the partnership that we continue to develop, uh, with the sheriff's office and Moses Lake Police Department. So, I'd like to present these certificates now. Okay. Thank you. Yes. Offer some photos up here? Do I need the microphone or can you hear me okay? Okay. So. So, Corporal Burcher, this is his Valor Award, his nomination letter is in the envelope. Here is your award. Here is your Valor Award there, if you wanna grab that. And the plaque, it's a certificate that says, uh, Valor Conduct Award presented to Corporal Josh Buscher for his quick response to an officer-involved shooting presented March 24th is when we did it, uh, signed by me. So, congratulations, Josh, and thank you. Corporal Mingus, this is your nomination letter as well for your copy. There you go. And your certificate says Meritorious Conduct Award presented to Corporal Yanni Mingus for his quick response to an officer-involved shooting presented, uh, March 24th, 2023, signed by myself. Thank you. Thank you again, council, for allowing me the opportunity to present, uh, these awards in front of you today. It's very near and dear to my heart and I'm, I'm very, very honored to do so and to have the ongoing partnership like I spoke of with the city of Moses Lake. It's, it's amazing. Thank you. Thank you again.
Well done, gentlemen. We love to hear these reports. Thank you so much.
The next item I have under city manager's report, as council, uh, may remember, uh, we've been, uh, working on the overall, uh, water conservation issue and had, uh, set out the date of March 28th for preliminary code. It's taking us a little bit longer and we're doing some more outreach and involvement in regards to the code. Uh, we reviewed the preliminary look at the conservation code today in our CMP committee and that piece will come back April 11th. And then the hope is that the end of April, then the landscaping code updates. But in the interim, I just wanted to commend our staff that has come together, uh, to put together, uh, the city-initiated effort. And so, I'm looking to Richard and Rich and, uh, our parks team, Mr. Coots newly arrived. Uh, so, um, as we remember, um, a number of our city facilities are irrigated with potable water. And so, Cascade Park, uh, we have 98% of it converted. Napell Landing, 100% on lake irrigation. Mount Lake, 100% on lake irrigation. Macosh, 99% on, uh, a few small areas, uh, that still need to be changed. Lower Peninsula, 100%. And of course, uh, we had a wonderful partnership, uh, with, um, the LDS Church to ziriscape the, uh, landscaping strip on Central Drive and we hope we have more partnerships like that. In addition, we have Architects West working on a plan to ziriscape around this facility. Uh, and so, great progress is being made. The map that you see up on the exhibit is a GIS map where we are, uh, regularly monitoring the facilities that are being converted and the water usage that is being saved. And in addition, our staff, Dolly Boyd, I think was the lead on the design of signs, um, that will be placed out to help educate the public. Uh, so, there is a lot of misconception in the public in regards to, um, what is irrigated with potable water and what is not. And so, this, these signs are, um, identified to, uh, let the public know if they're irrigated with lake water or, uh, if they've been ziriscaped and then how much savings there is, uh, that is happening. And, uh, we know that it was important for the city to take the first steps as we work with all of our citizens in, uh, conserving so that we've got a sustainable source for the long term. So, just wanted to provide you with that update and, uh, and again, many thanks to our staff. The team has come together and I'm really proud of the work that has been done in, in quick, quick manner. And so, those were the two items I had for city manager's report.
Deputy Mayor Martinez?
Oh, wait, there is one more. Sorry. Yes.
Before we go on, I think she had a comment.
Yeah, thank you for all the work that you guys are doing. And I just wanted to take the opportunity, since we have such a large audience today. When do we start with our water conservation? As far as watering our, our lawns?
And so, the code that is coming to you on April 11th is looking at a year-round program. A year-round program for conservation. And so, that will be for your consideration at the April 11th meeting.
And, um, never mind that, if we were just with, with the way it is now, when does it start?
It, it was a June to October program.
June to October. Okay. Thank you.
And yes, we had an item in regards to taking our applications for the overall comprehensive plan. A request on the part of staff, a request on the part of staff to extend that deadline for one month. Kirsten, do you have any additional comments? I think we had a memo in your packet that was self-explanatory.
Yeah, if you have any questions, let me know, but wanted to provide the public a little more opportunity to ask for.
Councilmember Scott.
A can of worms into that. But, uh, as far as the data that we're using for, for conservation and water shortage, is there any other contrary scientific data that comes up as far as, you know, what the status of, of our water situation really is? I mean, is there anybody else? I mean, some people are saying this, some people, I mean, are we aware of any other stuff coming up or data that's out?
So, we, we, uh, one of the work items on the overall, uh, water issue was the update of the 2012 municipal study. And so, all of that data has been gathered. A preliminary report has been, uh, is being prepared and, uh, Kevin Lindsay with Geo Engineers will come back to you with that report. And so, that will give you a long history, uh, looking at our pumping data and I think, uh, Richard Law has a comment.
So, there's been, this, this has been studied now for 50 years and it's in, there's, there's no data that suggests that our aquifer is doing anything but declining, our deep aquifer. So, that's the aquifer we're concerned with, the, the deep basalt formations. They have been declining on the order of five feet per year for generations. Uh, if you look in the Odessa area, uh, there are many, many dry wells, um, the Lind area. So, these, this isn't just city of Moses Lake data. We have data going, on all of our deep wells going back for 20, 30 years where it's continuously monitored. And every year they drop, some of our wells drop two feet, some of our wells drop 20 feet. The average is a little over five feet a year. They drop every year. That's our data. And then the Potato Commission did a study, the, um, the, the Quama did, has done multiple studies and they all show the same data. The deep aquifer is dropping and not being replenished.
Do we know how deep the aquifer is?
Um, where the bottom is?
Yeah.
No. But, uh, the deeper you go, the worse the water gets. The city of Lind had to, uh, their well went dry, so they drilled a new well. They found water. They had to go to 2,000 feet to get water. It's, it's almost 100 degrees coming out of the ground and it is so hard and sulfur-ridden that it stinks, but that's the only water they can find. So, the, the deeper you go, the worse the water gets.
Anybody else on the comprehensive plan request? Do you need a motion on this item to extend the deadline?
I'll make that motion to extend the deadline.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion to second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Was that it for the city manager's report?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, the consent agenda, all items listed are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. Accept a motion. Thank you. I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We switch the items around a little bit. We will, uh, move on to the sleep center location negotiation and this one is presented by Community Development Director Kristen Sackett. Kristen, sorry, Kristen.
It's all right. Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Um, do you have a, okay, let's see if we can get this right. Sorry about that. Um, I do have a PowerPoint presentation I'm gonna share tonight, but I'm going to also back up a little bit and, um, describe a little bit about this, probably a little bit more than usual because of the, the size of the audience. But to be clear, the item on the agenda is really to discuss authorizing the city manager to enter into negotiations to acquire a permanent location for the sleep center that currently exists in our community. And is, tell me Ben, if this is gonna work with the PowerPoint? While we're waiting to see if it pulls up, I'll just remind everyone that in August of 2020, I pushed it more than once. Okay. Great. Thank you. Okay. So, we'll just leave the slide right here and I'll, I'll move on shortly here. But in August of 2020, the city entered into an arrangement with Hope Source, who some of you heard from earlier today. We had a study session, um, at 6:00 PM where we heard about the Homestead Act and about what is currently taking place at the sleep center. So, when we opened the doors in 2020, um, Hope Source was the entity that managed the sleep center. And we have 35 units that were put into place, individual sleeping units, and it's now up to 38 units intended for individuals over the age of 18 who were experiencing homelessness. The location selected at the time was addresses 1045 Broadway. It was considered temporary and we had a lease that was for a two-year period that ended in September of last year. However, the property owner later agreed to extend the lease for an additional year, giving us until September of this year. Thus, the city took action to enter into a contract with a firm that would conduct a feasibility study to help us look at the cost of operation over time, look at possible locations for the permanent center so that we'd no longer be relying on leasing out and having unknown factors, uh, moving forward. So, the city contracted with Eco Northwest in May of 2022 and they did provide us with a sleep center feasibility analysis. It's been attached to the packet and I'm going to be referring to it at times, but I've also pulled out a few of the exhibits from the packet as we discussed this topic. Um, but moving on, um, this was referenced earlier, but the reason that we, the city even opened up a sleep center was because of the 2018 Boise decision where the Ninth U.S. Circuit Court of Appeals ruled that cities could no longer prohibit people who were experiencing homelessness from camping in public unless they were provided with adequate shelter. And so, I've just pulled a few, um, articles from previous city, um, locations. This is actually right next door to the police station, somebody camping right there. This is before we were allowed to remove them from public property. Uh, here's another newspaper article, Moses Lake City officials say homeless presence along activity trails increasing. It was a concern, you know, if you've got a trail where you want the public to be able to walk along, um, how are we gonna remedy that problem? Here's another. Here's another photo, homeless temporarily vacates Alderfield for landscaping. And this was from another newspaper article, Moses Lake continues to tackle shelter challenges. So as I just said, we opened the sleep center. This is an aerial photo, and it's showing the current location that's been there since August of 2020. It's at the intersection of State Route 17 and Broadway Extended. It provides a safe overnight place to sleep. It was already described earlier, but it operates between the hours of 6:00 PM and 8:00 AM. Many of you heard this already, but new people trickled in, so I apologize for any overlap. Guests can check in between the hours of 6:00 and 10:00, and then it's lights out. And then we do have security that comes onsite. Hope Source staff goes home, and then they come back in the morning to help with the checkout. And then they're closed at 8:00 o'clock in the morning. The facility, I don't know if you can tell on here, but there is a little mobile unit where they do the check-in. You can hopefully see the fence that's outlining it. The check-in facility is a rented office space that we are using grant funds to pay for every month. And within the facility, you'll see all the tiny units. Each guest has their own place to stay overnight. The larger unit in there is bathroom facilities. There's a men's and a women's restroom, and those are also... It's a rented structure as well. But it does provide clean, safe restroom, shower, and sleeping facilities. And here's just some photos showing the site. It's gravelled. There's 38 units. We've averaged 16 guests per night since it opened. However, there have been nights where they did reach capacity, and that was typically summer nights, when it was very hot. Hope Source has reported that they've provided 5,774 safe bed nights, and they do have safe storage onsite where they can put their belongings into a tote and they lock them up. And they can also get access to other providers that do come onsite. And I just gave you a quick figure here. The annual operating costs are $545,000. And the way this is currently funded is through recording fee dollars, which are collected by the county. The city gets a portion of those dollars every year, and also a variety of grant funding sources that are currently coming from the State Department of Commerce. So moving on, I just wanted to point out that with Eco Northwest, we determined that we needed to find a location that we... The city could put the sleep center permanently. So we tried to come up with a list of properties, and these were some of the factors initially considered. We wanted to make sure it was the right zoning. It was at least an acre or more. It would be preferable if the city owned the property, and if not, the property could be for sale. So here's a quick map that's found in the packet. This shows all the sites that were considered. Ooh, sorry, turned the paper there. And I'll just move on quickly because we did narrow down the sites to a list of four. And when we got down to the further list, this just describes a little bit more about what we were looking for. So when we were looking at the location, we were considering how accessible it was to services and that it was ideally not near a school or a park. The size already talked about being an acre or greater, the commercial two zoning. Utilities, we needed access to water and sewer because we want the new location to have a permanent bathroom, not a rented one that's like what you would get when you're going to the fair. So that would be long-lasting. The facility right now, it's getting a lot of wear and tear and has to be repaired quite constantly. The site acquisition, whether it was city-owned or for sale. And another thing we were looking for was whether or not there were any onsite structures that could be repurposed for the use of the office, the bathroom facility, et cetera. And if there wasn't, or even if there was, what kind of development would need to occur on the site in order to just move the existing operations to the permanent location? So the consultants that we hired, they went through this analysis, and they created just a color coding chart, and those are several of the sites up there. This was the original one before we narrowed it down. And, you know, like location, if it had a red, well, then it wasn't a good location. Maybe it was near a school. If it was green, that particular attribute was being met. So as you can see, we tried to analyze them and move along to a shorter list. So this was the list of final sites. I said we have four, and we do, but this is from a packet, the presentation that was done in the midst of the process. And I will go through these sites in a little bit more detail, but the final sites were a city-owned property on Central Drive, a property that says Irrigation District. It's a location of the Moses Lake Irrigation and Rehabilitation District. I'm going to call it the MLIRD building. And the existing site, from this one, we moved one of the other sites. So to go through them a little more detail, this is an aerial photo of the property that the city of Moses Lake owns. It's located on Central Drive. The red box is drawn around the site that we own. The site is itself... You can see the boundary lines in blue. So the city owns this site. It's near the new food bank. It's got the appropriate size, and it has access to utilities in Central Drive. And the police station is going to be built on this site. And so the thought was that you could put the sleep center units next door to the police station, but it's going to take quite some time to get that constructed. So if that was the site selected, we would have to go through the site preparation costs, and we'd want to grade the portion, and we'd want to most likely pave it. Right now, it's very difficult for anyone with a disability to get a wheelchair or walker through the gravel at the current site. Some of the constraints were that it was far from services in the library, and then it would add time to get the site prepped. The MLIRD site is located here on Wheeler Road. And once again, the site, this is an aerial photo, it's depicted with a red box around it. When you're looking down on that photo, you can see that there's an existing building on the site. It was listed for sale. It was noted by the consultants, they found it for sale, I want to say 1.2 million. There's utilities already on the site, and there's a building. And you could potentially put the sleep center units behind that existing building. And the thought was that the building itself could be used for the office space, do a little renovation, have the bathrooms in there. The guests would not be using that unless there was perhaps the extreme weather conditions. When it's extremely hot or extremely cold, city and other providers do like to provide warming shelters and cooling centers. But right now, the existing sleep center doesn't have that as an option. They can allow two people into the little office unit at a time, and then they got to go back out into the cold. Some of the constraints are just the size and that you wouldn't be able to expand it over time, and then just need to consider the purchase price. And this is just a photo of that existing building on the site. You could potentially find a way to utilize that front parking lot area, but the units would go behind the building. And here are some photos of the interior of the building. And this is likely where they would put the... Create an area for a warming or cooling center. The other option that came up late in the game, we had considered the Keogee site. That was originally the third unit. And I didn't really go into detail on Keogees, but we eliminated that because of constraints on the site. And in December of last year, the owner of the existing site came and approached us and said he would actually be willing to consider having that become the permanent location. So this was thrown in. We asked the consultants to add that back into the list of sites to be considered. So you already saw that photo in the corner in the beginning of this. Opportunities here is it's... The location is familiar to the community, and the property owner has talked to us about doing the construction of the improvements that need to be made. Constraint would be time and funding to relocate the guests during construction. Ideally, it wouldn't... You know, we try to minimize that, but that's just something we'd have to consider if that's the site that was selected. So what we did with the consultants is we talked about, you know, different ways of operating the center. And I'm not going to go through all the operational models tonight, but we did talk about, let's just keep the services exactly as they are, all the way up to like whether it was a 24/7 model and providing like three meals a day. And we're not even looking at doing anything like that. We just want to consider, how do we keep doing what we're already doing right now and maintain it, but just on a site that the city owns so that we're not incurring the ongoing costs associated with rent, leasing the space, leasing the buildings, and things like that? So moving on to this slide, we were anticipating moving costs, which would be acquisition, moving, and then temporary sleeping arrangements, and then any upgrades that we would need to make to the site. So that would be any site preparation. We're going to get additional shelters, you know, we're going to do about bathroom. And it lists bathroom trailers and office trailers, which is what we have now as trailers. We don't want that for the new facility. And then we talked about some wants that staff thought would be nice, would be to have some amenities like a bike rack and a storage check-in area. And also whether or not we could provide any heat to the unit so that they could actually be a safe place when you have below, you know, freezing temperatures. So on this slide, this is some land prices that were considered. And let me see if I... If anyone's referring to the packets, I believe I referred to the page numbers. So the exact cost of acquisition is unknown, but this is considered Exhibit 16 on Page 23 of not the council packet, but the Eco Northwest feasibility study. So what this shows is that we did have a known price for the Keogees. So that says your... I'm sorry, not Keogees, the Irrigation District. Sorry, try not to touch anything. So we had that price known, and then because it is potentially detrimental to assume a market rate sales price for the other sites, we assumed a range in which the sales price might fall using the Irrigation District as a proxy. So it's showing the existing site. Honestly, these are assumptions about what it might cost to purchase. Central, we already own it, so it's zero. And you're going to see Keogees listed in all of these slides, but it's really actually taken out of consideration. And then you have the Irrigation District. This next one, this slide would be Exhibit 17 on Page 24. And this provides the high-level moving costs and site upgrades assumed to occur in the future. So these costs are the ones depicted in the orange or yellow, however it appears to you, alongside the land prices assumed in the previous exhibit. So the Central Drive exhibit... I'm sorry, site would require the most investment as the property is currently undeveloped and would require site leveling, paving, and utilities to be expanded. Now, three of the scenarios studied assumed that a new building would be built. So moving on to the cost of a new building, they just assumed the same cost across all of the sites for a 4,000-square-foot building. That would include laundry, kitchen, new bathrooms, considered 1.23 million. And then with the Irrigation District property, they threw in 400,000 for just upgrades that they're assuming that would need to be made. So with this final slide, it's combining all of those factors together to just kind of look at a cost comparison. So when you're looking at the first one with the existing site, you know, we're going to construct facilities or the building for 1.23 million plus the upgrades and the cost of the land, and then just the same all across the board, just to kind of give you a picture of what we're looking at. The recommendation that did come down from the consultants was to pursue the MLIRD site. There were several factors in its favor. There's a building onsite that's already operational and likely available for immediate use. Would have space for the staff that are already going there every day. They also do have partners that come and meet with the clients on occasion there. Renewal will come out occasionally and do interviews. Recovery Navigator comes out to visit with them. So we'd have room there for those services to occur. And potentially in the future, you know, if we were to have a space like that, we could ask if any of them wanted to have permanent lease space, which would help offset the costs of the building and the facility costs. As I already discussed earlier, it could be a space for the warming center or cooling location in those extreme temperatures. And then acquiring the asset actually offers other potential benefits where if the city owned the property, and right now, we are funding everything completely through grant funding, if that ever went away and different decisions were made in the state or at the local level, we would have that asset that we could then... We could surplus the property or find some other use, you know, we could sell it. But it would actually be considered an asset to the city. Another thought that they threw out was potentially, you know, maybe it would be land that could be used for affordable housing in the future because that is part of the problem leading to the homelessness situation. So the report also noted that they did not feel that the Central Drive site would be an appropriate location just because it would require full site development in order to accommodate this existing shelter model. And there are concerns with the location. I mean, even though it would be next door to a police station, it would also be across the street from a park and residential areas. The existing site came... Became an option late into the study. It's still a feasible option. It's just not the one that came out as the top recommendation from the consultants, but this is actually just being provided as information to City Council to consider tonight. Several years ago, Allison could speak to it, maybe not several, but a year or two ago, the city was awarded several funds of ARPA dollars, and some... An exercise was conducted to determine where to allocate those dollars to. And 1.5 million was assigned to... For the purpose of locating a permanent sleep center facility. A portion of those funds were used to conduct this feasibility analysis. So there is a remaining 1.438 available for the purpose of this use. And so this discussion tonight was really to present the options that the consultants came up with in consultation with staff. It was shared with the Ad Hoc Homelessness Committee that consists of three city council members, staff members. And they also recommended, after a Friday, March 10th meeting, they also recommended moving forward with the MLIRD site for the location. But at this point, I can conclude my presentation. I am available for questions. I know that there's a lot of people in the audience that want to speak to this topic. And we'll just stand for questions at the right time. Thank you.
I think we should move on with the citizens' comments on the matter, and then we'll take council comments and questions. First off is Carrie Cortez. Let me just remind you, if others have already expressed your views, you may simply indicate that you agree with the previous speaker, and then respect those that have positions that may differ with yours. And then any debate or interactive discussions are strictly prohibited. And then you have a maximum of five minutes. State your name and city of residence.
Hello, council members. I'm Carrie Cortez. I'm a Moses Lake resident. Before the sleep center opened, people were upset with council about the tents and the parks around the city. So the council took responsibility of the homeless housing program and issues to get funds for the sleep center. When the sleep center was going to open, people were upset. When the enhanced shelter was going to open, people were also upset. Yet, it seems a lot of people forget that because most of their concerns, while valid, never came to fruition. Last year, the idea of a transformational campus came before the council, and people were upset again. Providing housing with supportive services such as mental health, drug counseling, and others seemed to be considered a handout instead of a hand-up and not a good use of funds. Now, people are concerned about the increasing homelessness crime, and more specifically, the increasing use of substances. It's apparent that supportive services are essential in efforts to address and solve homelessness in addition to providing housing and shelter, remembering there's no one-size-fits-all, and not all homeless need those services. This is a county-wide issue, and I agree, the financial burden shouldn't rest solely on the city. However, as the largest city in the county, I think we must recognize our responsibility to lead the way towards solutions, plus our commitments to continue receiving House Bill 1406 and recording fee dollars. I support the purchase of the Swartz Building to relocate the sleep center. From my understanding of the feasibility study, the units would move, and some sort of permanent bathroom or shower facility would be brought in to the back area with the units. The building would operate as the current sleep center office does and possibly provide storage space or meeting spaces for service providers as needed. This means the Swartz Building will always have staff and can easily be well-maintained. I also think it's an exciting opportunity for the city to invest in the future and preserve an iconic building built locally to represent the city. And I think a good way to represent Moses Lake is our dedication to care for our community. This is just the beginning. Homelessness is not going away. Housing is still unaffordable, so continuing to lease isn't financially responsible. Moses Lake should have a permanent location for the sleep center so police can continue to enforce no camping in public property, and the city can meet its commitments for operating its homeless housing program. This is just another step in what will be a long, ongoing process. I think next, it's important that the council actively engages the county, other municipalities, and legislators to get funding for the renewed facility... and legislators to get funding for the renewed facility and other rehabilitation and mental health services as well as housing. I feel that I have a pretty good understanding of the situation and that I can say that this model works. Housing first works. But without affordable housing and funding for supportive services, the current program can only do so much. An argument against the program is that it's not working, but it's never been fully funding, include, and fully funded, including services provided by other agencies outside of the city's purview. Until all needed services can be properly funded, I think it's unfair to say it's not working. We all live here in Moses Lake. This affects our entire community. Every time that people become upset over the homeless situation and come to council meetings, while they're well-intentioned, they're often misinformed and uninformed. Please do not let the hysteria created by a few dictate your decision. Public opinion constantly shifts, while doing what's right remains the same. Please listen to the service providers and first responders. We need the sleep center. We need more mental health and substance use disorder services, which should be a shared concern of all entities in the county. Please invest in the future well-being of our entire community by relocating the sleep center. It's cheaper and more sensible than jailing people for experiencing poverty and addiction. Thank you.
And I apologize if I butcher any names here. Sandra Marcusson. You'll have to correct me.
Marcusson, it's okay. Sandra Marcusson. I live rural south of George, and so you're wondering why I'm here in Moses Lake, but I will have you know, as goes Moses Lake, so goes the county. And I shop here, live here, I've worked here for 20 years almost, and it is the hub. So what happens here affects me. And I went to a meeting, and I was disappointed at what I heard. And I, but Allison Williams said, "You should read the feasibility study." So I got it out, and when I got to page 65, I looked up the parcel numbers that they had determined, and they weren't valid numbers. Two of them didn't work. Only Kyojis worked, and they didn't give one for the last one. But because I'm local, I can maneuver around and find where these things are. But I would like to say that I am a real estate agent, and I'm held to a high degree. And if I put a wrong parcel number on it, I could be held for fraud and lose my license. And this feasibility study was incredibly unprofessional, either by intent or by incompetency because of these missed parcel numbers. It made it really hard for your average person to be able to study and find where these locations are. The city paid $62,000 for what I consider a fraudulent report that was littered with so much erroneous data and conjecture by these alleged experts. And I would have you look at page 91, if I can turn to that. They say, they're talking about the Moses Lake Irrigation Building, and they're talking about the land values, saying, "However, this method is imperfect as well. For example, the assessed value on the existing site," speaking of the irrigation building, "is much lower compared to the other sites, and without a title report to review, it's difficult to know why." We paid $62,000, and you couldn't come up with a title report? So, being a little ingenious, I called the assessor's office. Matt Hope, tell me about this property. Well, it's owned by the irrigation districts, which I already know would be exempt because it's U.S. property. You would think that if you're going to pay $62,000, that he would have this information. I find it fraudulent, and it shakes my soul to think that we are paying this kind of money when we have talent sitting right here. We have business people, people that know this town. They know well enough not to put it by a ballpark on Central. They know well enough where things are in this community. I don't want my city run this way. I consider Moses Lake my city, adopted city, I guess. It's, to me, it's shameful to have a Seattle company that has, claims to have experts give us this kind of fraudulent information. I don't want our community to become like Seattle. Whatever decision you make tonight, you can't base it on this fraudulent feasibility study. I think you should demand a full refund, and I think that it's time you pay yourselves because volunteering for this kind of big position, and I'm not just buttering you up, I'm serious. Anyway, thank you.
It's okay, I've been called worse. Well, I appreciate what you're steady of that, but I do wish to speak in favor of the proposal, and that eventually, the long-term goal would be the building of a homeless shelter, and not just a sleeping shelter. And my three reasons for this are, one, well, there are many, there are some people who do take advantage of the homeless situation. There are genuine homeless, some of whom are unsheltered because of bad luck, or mental illness, or the disease of addiction, and we need to take care of them. My second reason is what's been mentioned before, that we have to make sure that we don't go back to where the homeless are camping out in our parks and other public facilities. And then a new one that maybe some of you haven't ever thought of is, currently, the de facto daytime homeless gathering place for many of the homeless is the public library. Anyone can use the public library so long as they follow the rules, but it would be far more desirable if the homeless had a welcoming space specifically designed to meet their needs rather than using the library. To summarize, we need to care about the homeless with mental illness, addiction, et cetera. We don't want our parks and public spaces to become homeless camps, and the public library should not serve as a daytime homeless base.
Thank you, council members. I, I don't know if any of you have read or Washington--
Before you begin, just your name and city of residence.
David Hunt, Moses Lake.
Thank you.
If, if any of you have read our Washington State Constitution, I, so I wanted to read part of it tonight. "The people of the state do not yield their sovereignty to the agencies which serve them. The people in delegating authority do not give their public servants, servants a right to decide what is good for the people to know and what is not good for them to know. The people insist on remaining informed and informing the people's public servants of their views so they may retain control over the instruments they created." I wanted to read that to you tonight because my question is, has the city notified anybody in the Lakeview neighborhood or the Wheeler businesses of your intent to purchase that building? I think the answer is no. According to the National Realtor Association, a homeless center next to the neighborhood decreases property values 13 to 24 percent. So I think it would be prudent on the city to notify that neighborhood and those business owners in there. Last night, a group of citizens put together a community meeting regarding this issue because the city has failed to do so. I want to thank Allison, and Kevin, and the rest of the city council who attended. I spoke briefly on the city of Coronado, California, and the amazing results the mayor has achieved. In a city of 24,000 people, they have zero homeless, zero. Okay? They follow the same Ninth Circuit decision that you keep referring to and have stricter laws than we do. Mayor Richard Bailey said this to me. "Our city works with the police department and a homeless service provider to give the homeless only one option, to get the help they need. Our city funds reasonable services to help those struggling, but we have no tolerance for tolerance policy for violating our laws or municipal codes. We make it very clear we will not tolerate encampments, and we don't tolerate other code violations such as being drunk in public, defecating in public, open drug use, or panhandling. We simply just don't tolerate these basic code violations, and what ends up happening, people either choose to get help we offer, or they leave." We have these rules and laws in effect right now in Moses Lake. Why is the city not enforcing them? Buying a permanent site on Wheeler is going to change this. How? How is it going to help? In this pamphlet Chief Frier handed out last night, it clearly says, "This sleep center meets the requirements of Martin v. City of Boise, and the city has adopted strict guidelines not allowing camping, camping in our city parks." All this did was move the people from the police station in your city parks to behind Safeway and all the other businesses on Central Drive. So it didn't solve anything. You got them out of the city hall, but they're downtown everywhere. So you didn't solve anything. And I don't think the city should get credit for doing that because all the business owners here are suffering. Has anyone at the city or the council been to the hotel up there on Pioneer or the sleep center and talked to the homeless or the people working there? Because I was there last week and spoke with a very nice young lady, and she said, "Nobody from the city up at the hotel or the city council has been in there and talked to them," to even know if the program we have is working or not working. The city paid Eco Northwest over $60,000 as a consulting company to do the feasibility study and draft a report. This company is based out of Portland and Seattle, and we all know how those cities turned out. Is that what we want for Moses Lake? According to the study provided by Eco Northwest, page 110 of your packet, the youth 18 to 24 homeless is down 34 percent in Grant County. So why do we need to purchase a facility? Does the city have a plan to end homelessness, or is this a never-ending money pit where you don't even have a plan? Has the city even followed state law and requested two appraisals of the property in question, not in the packet? Last night, Chief Frier and Allison said there are 653 homeless in Grant County. According to the study that's in your packet by Eco Northwest--
Mr. Hunt, can you please just wrap up? Just your final statement.
That is false and misleading according to the point in time count done by Grant County. I have that here. I'll wrap up. I believe if we start with the sort of enforcement Coronado uses, people will not be attracted to our city in the first place. We will only have a handful of locals to deal with, and that is manageable by churches and serve Moses Lake. Local people doing great things. Seattle and Oregon have created a magnet of drug use and chaos. The problem is now so far out of control, it is unmanageable. Combining that with the absolute refusal of political and community organizations to properly diagnose the actual problems of drug addiction and mental health, the percentage of people on the streets or who are just down on their luck are absolutely dwarfed by the people on the streets because of drug addiction and mental health issues. So I just ask the council to postpone this until you have more accurate information, and, and don't waste our tax dollars on something that's not going to work. And Mr. Mayor, can I--
Can you, what is the number for Grant County?
So we'll, we'll pass this around.
Can you, what is the number for Grant County?
286.
So I don't know where the 630 number came up from. Thank you.
Andrew Copan. Probably butchered that one, too.
My name is Andrew Copan, and I live in Pelican Point, so Moses Lake. First of all, I don't know this lady's name, I missed it, but I 100% agree with her that we should get our money back, whatever you spent for the consultation, because I, too, am a real estate agent, and I can get that information, and that should be valid. Second of all, I want to agree with David Hunt. We should postpone things right now because a lot of times we don't have the correct information. As a little bit of a background, I was, or I lived in Redmond from 2000 until 2020, and I was on the Redmond Public Safety Advisory Board, and I was also a member of the Redmond Homeless Commission. And what I'm seeing here is the same issues, untruths that are, that were said to Redmond five years ago. It is interesting how the homeless are projected and the information that we are given, it's never the real information. And we're going down the same problems that we're, that we saw in Redmond five years ago. And I really do not want Moses Lake to become like Redmond and what, and what has happened in Seattle. We can do better. All we need to do is sometimes slow down, look at the information we have, and dig down deeper. And it's really the definitions that really count, and we're not doing that. And I think with what David said and a few other people have said, slow down, let's take a look at it, and let's do the right thing. Don't be forced to do something because doing something can make things a whole lot worse.
My name is Dan Delano, and I'm a resident of Efrida. And I wanted to just add, we've been, well, at least I'll speak for myself, Phil, a little blindsided by the whole homeless thing. I'm 58, and in the last two, three years, this has been just, I mean, this is unprecedented in my lifetime, anyway. So when I'm faced with anything like that, you know, fixing stuff around my house or whatever, I've hit YouTube University and I, you know, because I feel like everybody, you know, I, you know, my, you know, I'm not unique, so somebody else has run into this as well. So what I put together is three different things that I felt that were very useful for me to kind of wrap my head around the whole homelessness or unhomed issue that we're, we're facing here in the, in the county. It is a countywide issue, and we've, and I agree with the other folks that have voiced that. So the, the first thing is a nonprofit in Eugene, Oregon, Square One Villages, and they have a number of tiny home communities that are just fantastic. In fact, I saw, saw them, and I, no exaggeration, I got goosebumps because it looked so ideal. The interviews that they had were, with the residents, were heartwarming. I mean, it was, it was, one gal, she was 66, she, I don't remember the, all the circumstances, but she ran into a hard time-- She, I don't remember all the circumstances, but she ran into hard times and she, at 66, was living in her vehicle and she was in her vehicle for, it was at least two years. And through Square One Village, their programs, she was able to get temporary housing and then eventually got a tiny home that is just hers. And seeing her talk about her tiny home, there's a requirement where they need to put at least 50 hours into sweat equity, which we all know that that increases that buy-in. It decreases the chance that if they're struggling with substance abuse, that they're going to relapse into that. All kinds of really good beneficial aspects on that. Let's see, moving along here. Interestingly, they do a community land trust. So they remove the land from the speculative market with the intent of creating permanent affordable housing. And yeah, I won't go into all the details. Do the, I have enough packets here. Everyone can get the links. And second thing is, oof, moving along here. This book here, San Francisco, Sico, San Francisco. Yeah, anyway, just read it. It is, you look at the title and in fact, my wife, she had a little bit of an issue. She says, oh, that, nobody's going to read that because, you know, it looks, you know, like they're just going to scream at you. This guy, he is a 30-year resident of San Francisco. So he saw everything from idyllic, you know, San Francisco to where it's at now. And he's done extensive, like close to a quarter of the back of the book are his citations, the studies and everything else that, so it's very, very well researched. You spend, so I did the audio version of this, seven hours, and you will, yeah, you'll know way more than a lot of the professionals that are in the field right now. And lastly, it's been already talked about, was the City of Coronado, California. And that, you know, that's, it's that, it's that Western common sense type mentality that the United States has in the past unfortunately been known for. And we've lost, I feel that we've lost that somehow. That somehow, all I hear from, in the last three years is, I'm sorry, our hands are tied. Our hands are tied. And that is not the United States that I remember growing up. We were the can do's and we got things done. This mayor, Richard Bailey, has done it. He, as David mentioned, he enforced the code violations that were already on the books. He didn't do anything really spectacular, new and earth shaking. They did, you know, to, I guess, to address the issues of, you know, we don't want to be cold-hearted about it. They made sure that they had resources in place that, you know, so it was, it was tough love and, you know, and these, here's the resources. So they, they got two choices. Either you accept help. If you don't want help, then you need to leave. And they, they have zero homelessness. So I guess that's really where I'll leave it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Casey Colson?
Hello, my name is Casey Colson. I'm a resident of Moses Lake. I first wanted to commend Hope Source for the good job they've done. I overheard the report and it's a lot of good being done. And the work that's gone into planning for these things, I know it's a lot of work. And so I commend the, I don't know, Allison. Yeah, but what is the title? City manager and their work. But I do, I do want to share something about my personal life and I, my wife reminded me, I should maybe not mention names. And so I have a family member that from the age of 14, he got into drugs and his life became very difficult. He was hooked on it from the first time and could never get off. And I asked him, I had a conversation with him about this, his life and how, he's now clean. So we talked about it and I said, what was the difference? What made you stop? How did you get your life back? And he said, I was arrested and I went to jail. I was there for 45 days and my mind was clear and I came out and I decided I wanted to go to rehab. I wanted to get better. And he did that and his life changed. And after a few years, he went, he went back into drugs. Went to the same friends he had before. Life changed for him and he went back to the way he was. And then yet again, he was arrested for possession of drugs, went to jail again, got himself clean and went back to rehab. And now he's been clean for two and a half years and he's doing great. He has a great job, union job. He has a girlfriend, a daughter, and he's just living a good life. And I watched this transpire in his life. And so the conclusion I've come to from seeing that as a personal experience is that for him, tough love is what he needed. He didn't need a place that catered to all of his needs and allow him to continue on with his drug use and make it easy for him to do that. He had to have something that made it difficult, hard enough that he had to change his life. And so while I think that we need to follow the law and there's things that ought to be done, I think that providing, if I was to make the decisions, I would allocate lower amounts of money for housing and higher amounts for mental health help and for substance abuse programs so that when they want to make the change, they're available to them. I know that there are some programs, but if I could, if I can make the choice, I would, I would put more money there for when people are ready to change. And I know there has been some, some good things happen from the homeless shelter. I, the number, I don't know if I have the numbers correct, but it sounds like there's maybe 70 homeless people in town at any given time and 16 or so or 20 are staying in this homeless shelter. So I know there are 50 more that are not and they're not, you know, in certain areas. But I have seen some of my business, I have a business in town, Colson Family Dentistry. And so I have seen some there and I have cameras and the police have been good to let them know they can't stay there when I've called them and I've helped some leave and very cordial. And there's nothing to be judged. These people are having a very hard time. And so we need to approach it with compassion. But my stance is that tough love has worked for my family member and that's what I think would work for most that are on drugs in that situation. Thank you. Any questions?
Alicia DeLuigi?
Hello? Sorry, I was not planning on speaking. Alicia DeLuigi, Moses Lake. Every Monday I actually go to the, to the housing, to the homeless overnight housing shelter to feed them pizza and just to provide them food stability, which I find stability is under every single successful model in the state, in the nation, and in the world, is providing these people stability first and foremost. Currently, under our case law, we are bound, we can't do anything unless we have a centralized place for them to go. Once we have a centralized place for them to go, that's like a 24/7 opportunity, then our police will have the authority to be able to start cleaning up these encampments. Spokane recently provided some really good case law to be able to help that out so we can put these people in centralized area. Once we get them stability, we'll be able to provide them amenities for drug rehabilitation and mental health illnesses, which seem to be two of the biggest factors as why these people are experiencing housing instability. Our Washington State governor, as well as legislation currently, is looking at allocating $4 billion in our upcoming budget specifically for affordable housing, for homeless and for behavioral health because we recognize the crisis and we're looking at all different types of models to find the success, to help these people out in compassion care because everybody has a brother, a sister, an aunt, an uncle, somebody that is experiencing some sort of either mental health illness, a drug issue and/or housing insecurity. We are doing everything that we can in every way possible and there are steps that we have to take. There's laws and rules that we have to follow and we can't just do something if we don't have the funding. So please, please, I encourage you to be patient. Everybody is working around the clock to do what we possibly can to help out with this situation so that we can centralize the people that are experiencing these types of misfortune right now so that the people won't be so frustrated with all these encampments everywhere and so that we can get them the proper help that we need. Currently, there is a drug court and one of the things that legislation is looking at right now and it looks like it's going to be passing is that when the Supreme Court of Washington changed the law with regards to drug possession, what's happening is they basically said, legislation, you guys need to look at this issue. You need to do something about it. They are. So what they're looking at is they're looking at making it a gross misdemeanor. We are very fortunate to have caring leadership in our, in our city as well as our county in our judicial system to get the grants and to get the funding, to get the drug courts up and going here so that we can give these people the opportunity to get the help that they need or sit it out in jail. Those are going to be their choices if they get caught with these drugs. But it takes time and we're in legislation right now and it should be done within the next few months and either it will happen immediately or it will start happening in June. But please be patient because this issue isn't just a city issue. It's not just a county issue. It's not even just a state issue or a national issue. This is a worldwide issue. So we're looking at models in every single spectrum to find the best, most successful ways that we can in compassion care because these are human beings. They have heartbeats too. They're broken and we need to help restore and heal them so that they can be productive or as much as they possibly can be productive citizens in today's society. And I want to commend our city council and I want to commend the staff here as well as Hope Source and everybody that's been involved in actually taking action in progressive steps to help solve the problem instead of just complain about it or speak about it without the knowledge that everybody deserves to have. So I hope that the education that I'm providing that I honestly was not planning on speaking about tonight does help people out further. And I am an open door if you have any further questions because I handle this matter on so many different levels, not just a city or a county, but a state and a federal. I'm always constantly looking for ways that we can make it better and find more funding. And so if there is something that you have to express or if you have a question, please don't hesitate to ask me because that must be one of my God purposes or something. I don't know. But I just ask, please have patience. We are working and doing the best that we can. And these guys all deserve a handshake and a pat on the back. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kevin Richards?
So my name is Kevin Richards and I am a citizen of the Moses Lake greater area. I am actually also the owner of the current site that's been shown to you. I am getting a lot of feedback, both when I allowed the city to place the site there. In fact, I offered the placement of the shelter on my property because they were having an issue with placing it next to an elementary school. And just, I wanted to clear the record here because I got a lot of people talking to me throughout the community saying, you know, one, one of my other tenants said, well, you know, it sounds like you really overcharged the city. And I wanted to put that to rest. Actually, the appraisal, I'm 20% less than the appraised value from four years ago. I've never raised the rent to this facility. I gave five different options to the city to lease, continue leasing, leasing with an option to buy, I would construct for the city and then lease or sell in multitude of different ways. Generally, I have a huge heart for the homeless as that's my faith. I want to do right by them. I don't even want to progress them to citizen progression level of having jobs. I don't think that that's our duty, but instead to care for them as their needs. Mental health is a huge issue. I think if we could take money in any amount and put that toward, toward the mental health issue, I think that would be super beneficial. But I definitely want to make sure that the record was at least clear to say that I'm willing to negotiate in any manner of ways, including continuing the underpaid lease, as it were, to help progress this cause. If you go somewhere else, I mean, God bless you. I hope it's the best choice for you. But I just want to make sure that for the record, I have been able to and willing to negotiate and discuss and benefit the community as a community member. So I guess with that, if there's any questions, but I'm leaving three minutes left. I'll have there be a note of that. That's never happened before.
We got two final ones and then we'll hold off on additional comment on this matter. Chris Dexter?
Hello, and I'm Chris Dexter and I'm from the greater Moses Lake area. And I've thought about this a lot because it is a difficult problem. And it is a situation we want solved. And so the question arises, what should we do in this prosperous land we live in when the poor continue to multiply? Where is the end? We don't want to just keep more and more. In the Old Testament Bible, Deuteronomy 15:11, "For the poor will never cease from the land." Therefore I command you, saying, "You shall open your hand wide to your brother, to your poor and your needy in your land." We know that we need to help people, but how can we be effective? In the New Testament Bible, Mark 12, 30, 31, "You shall love the Lord your God with all your heart, with all your soul and with all your might and with all your strength." This is the first commandment and the second like it is this. "You shall love your neighbor as yourself." There's no other commandment greater than these. To help this select group of poor people, we need to teach them how to serve and make and do things. In our community, we are blessed to have people that love Jesus and are willing to help. Of course, these volunteers need to be free to explain to these poor people how Jesus has helped themselves and can help the poor. We have example of union gospel in Spokane that has a proven way to help these poor people to learn, serve, and be productive and prosper. Teen Channel, excuse me, Teen Challenge in Spokane has also helped the poor to change their lives for the better. It is important to love these people by teaching them to love God, love people and love themselves, therefore learning to serve and a positive production. Teen Challenge has a record of having over 90% recovery. And so there are ways for us to stop this cycle and we should be investigating ways that work so that we're not just building a larger and larger structure of helping the poor. We should really help them by getting them so they're not poor. Thank you.
Robin Fode? Fode?
Thank you, David Scog. Hi, I'm Robin Fode. I gotta get it taller. I live in the greater Moses Lake area, out in the county. And David Scog said something in the beginning of the night. He said something to the regards of, we don't want to change the flavor of Moses Lake. of view. I really agree that we need to work on a situation that's already been tested and tried. And I think the one that David said about Coronado, because we want to help these people but providing just a sleep center, we already provide a sleep center. And we need to have a proven track record of something that already works, and your sleep center is adequate. We've got that, and we can do whatever we need to do, it's already there. Last night, I want to thank our city manager, Allison, and Kevin Fuer, our chief of police, coming to a meeting where citizens voice some concerns. The one thing that I was left with was a bag full of frustrated people who attended. It's not that Grant County doesn't honor their law enforcement. We love our law enforcement. We love our sheriffs, because they serve us out where I live. We love our police force and what they're doing, and we love our firemen. But, yeah, right? But the thing that people said after it was all over is that they felt, "We want to help the homeless." I don't even think that's an issue here, but we want a proven track record of something that works and not just throwing money out there, right? Okay. The other thing is, is that the citizens of Moses Lake are suffering, and the retail businesses are suffering here, and they're not being heard. And I appreciate what Kevin Fuer said last night, that he knows everything that goes on here, but it diminished what people were trying to say. And when people were leaving, there was so much pain and hopelessness for the citizens and retailers in Moses Lake. There is a lot going on with these people, losing a lot of money and investing in their businesses. We don't want to end up like downtown Portland, where all the Starbucks have left and Walmart, now that in Grant County, we depend on Walmart. And we depend on Safeway, where he's been assaulted, the manager, over two times. He deals with it on a daily basis. You can go and walk the back alleyways and go walk and talk and support the local retailers and how they can get help, because they're in it and they are suffering there, and they felt... Last night, there was a lot of business owners there. The thing is, we're only as good as, everybody knows who's in business, you're only as good as your management, right? So, I am not getting on any one person, but our flavor has changed here. We're dirty, we look slothful. I do think that there's things that we can do to help. We want to help the homeless. It's not like people don't want to help the homeless, but we've got to find a way that works, so we're just not throwing money out there. And last night, when people were leaving, they felt unheard. Now, they're not the homeless. And tonight, when I was listening to the pre-meeting of, "Well, there's, you know, it's not so bad," basically, we've got so many, I don't know, campers here and there, but there's Blackwater. There's one been parked in front of my dad's place, right down in town, low-income living, right in front of a ramp where people in wheelchairs have to get out, or people who are in firm, and it's been there, well, two and a half weeks, and people can't get out. But they have rights. They have rights. Well, citizens have rights, and that we've got to find a balance in. And I appreciate what everybody's doing here, but I think that there's another way to go about it, and that is a proven track record of something that works, so that we are not just putting money out there for another sleep center. With what? It can just continue to grow? The state of Washington is leading in the homelessness, okay? So, of course, we've got every opportunity for people to get what they need here, but let's get something that really works, so we stand out and make a difference in this state, so we don't look like Seattle or Portland. Let's find something that works and that people really get the mental help they need, like the dentist back there in the corner. What's your name? Well, Casey, I like what you said, because tough love means sometimes it just doesn't feel good to do what you need to do, to go to rehab. But if you want to get better, that's what's got to happen. And you know what? God bless your family and your brother, because he got better because of tough love, right? And decisions and choices. That's what we need here. Okay, I'm done.
Now, we greatly appreciate all your comments, and this has been quite the difficult topic. We've been wrestling with this for many years now, and there's no real easy answer for it. So, I'd like to open the floor to the council members and just remind you, if somebody else has stated that opinion, just say you agree with them. Try to keep your comments short and to the point. If there's any questions or comments from the council.
So, can I ask a question to any of the people? Is that appropriate? If I have a question for any of the speakers?
Certainly. Yeah, they just need to come up to the mic.
Well, you made a comment, I mean, regarding your willingness to negotiate down there and do any shape or form. One of the things that I've always thought, I'm, just me personally, I'm not overly fond of buying a facility that may lose its funding, I guess is what I'm saying. So, is the option to continue to lease at your facility?
Yes. To answer your question, the option is to continue to lease the current facility as you wish, also to build a building that could be retrofitted to a warehouse or some other purpose if funding is reduced, and to lease that as well. So, there's a myriad of options here that the capital's market would have already figured out, that I think we'd really be struggling with. And then for the study, that $101,000 to buy a corner of Interstate 17.
Yeah, I know.
It's probably a little low, but I'm willing to negotiate, so, but that couldn't be the starting point.
So, my comments was, is just making sure, like I say, I, and most of you know I am in real estate, and I've also had the opportunity to deal with a lot of state leases, and the state has a habit of not owning buildings. They have a habit of leasing buildings, mainly for the fact that, just in case they do lose their funding. And so, I would say I do understand, and I did hear a lot of great comments, both sides, and I have always thought that one of the solutions is we've got to figure out how to fix the problem, which we all know, there's the homelessness that need the hand up that is ready to hopefully reinvigorate and get into the workforce. I think there's a lot of great programs already there for that, and then we have to deal with the mental and the drug addiction, and I think those are all, to me, there are three different problems. So, anyway, I just wanted to make sure I heard you correctly.
Councilmember Madewell?
So, my understanding is that we need to move the motor homes from where they are now. So, Kevin, my question to you is, is there space there to put motor homes so that they can be moved? That's my concern first.
So, I knew I'd get my five minutes in the end here, I guess, but, so, the city actually has an alleyway dedicated to the city between Senex and the current homeless shelter. So, actually, you own property, so you're talking about parking these on safe parking areas or on public property. Coincidentally, you already own a large strip of ground through there. I think it's 30 or 40 feet by a couple hundred feet that could be utilized for RV parking. Also, if you were to bring up that aerial photo, there's additional spots that you're already leasing that you're not utilizing, because the fence didn't enclose beyond the 35 or 38 units. So, if you were to make the most of this, you could have additional. And then lastly, Councilwoman Madewell, I've designed this, because I own an engineering company. I actually designed a facility that could accommodate the need, as I understand it. Obviously, Hope Source may have a slightly different view, because this would be all-encompassed in a building, but it also accommodate those RV with screening and being able to park in a screened, you know, concrete CMU, nice fence, so.
Deputy Mayor Martinez?
I just had a couple of questions for clarification. So, the city's understanding was that there was a deadline for the lease, and you extended it, thank you, but there was no communication back from you, and so, that's why we ventured down this path or this lane. Let me finish, please.
Sure, of course.
Thank you. And had to spend money to try and figure out where we were going to relocate it. And it wasn't until, I believe, December of this, you know, so just a few months ago, that you reached out to the city after we'd already gone down this path, that you were interested in being considered as a site. So, I want to clarify that, if that was the case.
So, if I may. So, we were asked for a two-year lease, actually, and then it was a one-year lease, for the extension, second lease. I offered the second-year lease at the end of negotiation, but they decided they wanted to do a single-year lease. So, but that was not for ultimately long-term purpose, right? So, the city was not entertaining a five-year lease, as I would typically do with a commercial property. So, we kind of left it as the short-term, intermediate leases to allow for that. If we had done a five-year lease, then obviously, I am obviously more comfortable with that as well. My banker certainly is. So, the ideal would have been to do a five-year lease. Actually, I was at the Red Door Cafe, eating lunch by myself, as I often do, different story, and David Eck was in there, speaking with another resident or citizen and saying, "Well, the owner landlord doesn't want to extend the lease." And so, that's where I had heard, "Well, wait, I'm the landlord. I'll go talk to David and say, 'I am willing to extend the lease.'" So, nobody had reached out to me, and I've checked my emails, there's nobody's reached out to me to say, "Hey, would you be interested in selling or doing a long-term lease or any of those items?" So, that's my recollection.
But you did give us a deadline.
I'm sorry?
You did give us a deadline on the lease at the time.
Correct. Every lease has a deadline typically.
Yeah. So, if I could proceed, please, thank you. So, to follow up then, and I guess I've learned differently, and it might be because Councilmember Fancher sells real estate and I buy it. Not that I buy much, because I can't afford it, but I've always grown up learning that you don't lease something and put money into somebody else's property, because you're just kind of throwing away your own money. I do understand that there might be some potential for their grants to not be available, although with the state of our state right now, I don't see that changing anytime soon when I look at who the governor is and who the legislature is, and our inability to elect common sense, electable people that can maybe change that course. So, I'm looking long-term when trying to make a good decision for the whole city. So, I'm considering a purchase rather than a lease, mostly because, again, you know, we're just throwing money. Oh, we're not owning anything. If you were to, if the city council were to decide that we want to proceed with a lease and not a purchase, what guarantee, I guess, do we have that you're not going to change again and decide that it's only a one-year lease after we've made improvements on that property? That's concerning to me, because then we could have this conversation again in another year, year and a half. And so, I know...
I believe, is that a question?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I believe the question is, what would have me, what would yield me from changing my mind to make it a shorter lease? What would do that would be a lease, right? So, you would have a lease with a period of term, and then I couldn't change my mind, because we'd be contractually bound to one another. But to be very clear and transparent...
But it could only be like a year, just like we have these last two years, right?
Yeah, then it'd be a lease term. If you did a year, you could do five years, you could do 10 years. You could do it with a building constructed on that, and that was the other option. But to be super clear, I'm community-driven and faith-based, okay? So, what is important to me is to care for these people. And so, what I want to be very clear about this is, I offered a lease with an option to buy, so you'd be locking in the value of that property and the acquisition price upfront. So, I'm trying, I've given five options, all written down, to say, "These are options that I'm absolutely willing to work with, to be flexible and meet the need." So, this is not just about capitalism. I'm a capitalist, and I believe in it, but I do think there's a community need here that I was trying to also fulfill through both the process. So, if that hopefully answers your question, your concern.
I think it does.
I do have a comment, and I serve on the ad hoc homeless committee along with Deputy Mayor Martinez and Councilmember Eck, and we were only shown one drawing and a couple, like, I think, two options of using your property. And I think that maybe we should discuss this a little deeper, maybe have you in the room while we figure out our options and what you're willing to do, because I think we're missing that component.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you for your service on the committee. I appreciate it, and I appreciate what you're doing. I understand you're in a very hard spot, so I can understand that as well. I'm willing to do whatever, you know, you need done. Obviously, there needs to be a financial equalization at some point, but I can draw all day, and that was what I had offered the staff, to say, "We can keep drawing and keep working through a myriad of issues." I think we talked about doing a warehouse-type facility, and then it was, and then inside the facility would be rooms, essentially, but those would be open-ceilinged rooms, so that they could have the same fire suppression, heating and air conditioning, and lighting, which makes it effectively quite a bit cheaper than having independent units. And nobody can, you know, mess with the units, and they're obviously suspended from the ceiling. But in the end, if funding were to discontinue or whatever, those units could be pulled out of there, and you have essentially retail and warehouse space. And so, that's what I put forward. We had a meeting with Hope Source, and Hope Source's concern was, they really prefer to have the isolated, pod-style facility. We can, of course, accommodate that. I just don't think, based on what I've seen as a taxpayer and citizen, that those facilities are going to be useful in, say, 10 years. They have a use life that's probably very short. So, I was hoping that we'd have more of a dialogue and go into conversation about, "Okay, maybe this is not ideal, but maybe we can figure out a way that would make this better." We met with the building department to make sure that we'd be meeting code, unlike the sheds, unlike the trailers and some of those things, to make sure that people are safe. So, there was a myriad of conversation that I was willing to continue in, but unfortunately, it was discontinued. So, I'm still open and willing to talk about it. If it, council applies in their wisdom that it's a different site, no harm, no foul, so.
Just to finish my thought, that I think that having Hope Source in the room with our committee and Mr. Richards could be beneficial in trying to just get options, because I think that's what we're looking for, is just what can we do instead of just being forced down one path? Deputy Mayor Martinez?
I do want to comment, and I think David Hunt was the one that asked. I have gone down to the sleep center. I've gone a couple of times to provide stuff that the people there needed, when it was cold and when it was hot. I've also had experience when we had the warming center and the congregate living that occurred there. It created a lot of issues. There were a lot of dangerous moments with hostile men, among other hostile men, women among the men, doing things that probably, well, that shouldn't have been occurring. And then, young people with their mother or their father, because just bad experience, they're homeless at the moment and needed someplace to stay. So, while I can see that it might be cheaper for congregate living, or maybe make sense as an option, there's a lot that goes into considering congregate living. We would probably have to pay for our full-time staff and security, but ultimately, it puts the city in a situation of liability if a man goes after a man or a woman who initially might have been okay with the attention she was getting. might have been okay with the attention she was getting, but then decides that this has gone too far. And, you know, we allowed that in congregate settings. So I do want to just point that out when we're looking at options of what to do and how to house the homeless. Thank you.
Councilmember Madewell?
So I'm checking, I think I heard you say that we have families down there. Is that correct?
No, they only take individuals and occasionally couples that demonstrate they're actually a couple. There's a different facility for families.
Okay, so those families are up on the hill at the motel. Okay, I was just clarifying because I was, okay. Oh, okay. Oh, okay, thank you for the clarification.
Anybody else like to make a comment? Questions?
What's the status of the Renew building that we used to house the assisted living right on the top of the hill next to Grant County Mental Health Building, or which they don't call that anymore, but what's the status of that building?
So I don't know that the city staff could comment on that. I don't know if we want to put Commissioner Jones on the spot.
Wasn't it recently remodeled?
So I'm Commissioner Rob Jones, Moses Lake area, Warden area. Don't forget, I'm 33% of any decision made by the board. No, so the Renew facility, everybody thinks that that was going to open as a place, and we do have Tom Gaines here. And the county, before I was elected, did a lot of work to bring that building up to the code to do that, but that was under a different director and a different CFO. So I don't know what happened, because I wasn't there, but the numbers weren't the same for the new director and just previous CFO. So it was about, it was 11-bed facility, and with 11-bed facility, the county's, the Renew CFO estimated going bankrupt in about a year and a half, because you have to remember that when you have psychiatrists on-site 24 hours a day, that's three to four different psychiatrists. Base pay, $400,000 before benefits, is my guess. Then you have the nursing staff 24 hours a day. So it just didn't pencil. The county doesn't have funding for that. Renew is 100% Medicaid-paid, so it doesn't cover that side of it. I mean, there's ways to do it. Suicide for me to say the word, but mental health sales tax, 0.1%, 1/10 of 1%, that's a possible way to do it, but we don't have groundwork or plans to do that, and we haven't really dug into it. At a county-wide group meeting that we did in George, Allison was there, some other people were there, Representative Tom Dent, Judy Warnick, Patty Murray's office, a lot of PUD. We did discuss, everybody kind of was in support of Duke looking at that tax increase, but it's not a popular thing to do. Neither is not helping with the mental issue. So at the end of the day, the only way a Grant County commissioner will add a tax is if the majority asks for it. That's because I'm not going to push it by myself. Like I said, I'm 33%. I'll get chopped off on the block, so, and probably not listened to anymore. So.
Do you know how much money was spent on that?
On the building total to bring it up?
I'm just curious.
Too much.
Too much, okay.
Too much to not operate it.
And it's not being used right now?
Right now, it's housing the crisis team. So Renew has additional staff. They moved them into there, and they could easily move them out to house that, but with 11 beds, it's not doing enough per night. I don't know the number that the state or the government will pay per night to house those people, but it needs to be in the high 30s per night of a person inside the facility in order to break even. Right now, Grant County, when they were doing those studies, it didn't have that many people to fill the beds, so now you're bringing people from outside Grant County to fill the beds, which we, the county is looking at regional mental health options. I'm not on that. Commissioner Carter sits in that group, the diversion group. I'm sure some of you in the room sit in that also.
I appreciate your comments. I think the important takeaway here is that a lot of money can be thrown at a big problem that has no value or very little value. So I think, you know, as we do things, it's not just a function of throwing money at it, because if it doesn't stick, it was an utter waste. And I think that's really important as we make decisions, that we get our bang for our buck and that they're well-thought-out, not just a knee-jerk because we have to move somewhere, we have to do this. I don't think we have to do it. So anyway, I appreciate your forthrightness and that you're only one-third responsible.
Is there any other questions?
Councilmember Swartz?
Yes, thank you. And thank you very much for everybody sharing their thoughts tonight on this issue. As a few people have said, it's not an easy topic to figure out. A brief history, back in February of 2022, we of the council were presented with this issue, and at the time, we were, you know, basically told that we had to move the warming center because the lease was up. And what I understand is that the warming center was started as a result of COVID, and so there were monies available, and maybe incorrect, or there were some emergency shelter provisions that were put into place that allowed us to do that. At that time, I made a motion to go ahead and figure out how to move the existing facility to another piece of property, because we couldn't stay there. That is what we were told, I believe, even during the meeting. I asked if the property owners had been approached, and it was shared that they had been and weren't interested. What we heard tonight is a different story. I don't know which one is the exact truth, but before we move much further, I think that should get figured out. So I did make a motion to move the warming center and just keep it as is. That motion did not pass, and then there was a motion made to do this feasibility study. And I believe I pointed out at that time that the feasibility study most certainly would result in a recommendation to increase the services that we're going to provide or make the building bigger. And that's clearly what has happened here. I was not in favor of the feasibility study to begin with for some of the same reasons that some of you shared tonight. Housing first is a philosophy. These feasibility studies do a lot of work to backfill those philosophies with statistics. I am very, very happy about the number of people that have shown up here tonight who are actual citizens here. What that feasibility study did not include is any of your voices. And so this is probably the most constructive conversation we've had to date about this issue. Now, it sounds to me like there's a lot of people who have a lot of great ideas here, and it sounds to me like we have a property owner in town who's willing to work with us on this. Until we get this figured out, and I think there's some things going on at the county level with the homeless task force that just got started, you know, maybe we should give them a chance to get up and running and see how we can work together before we do anything too drastic. I would be prepared to make a motion tonight, and I'll just go ahead and make it, that we, you know, enter into negotiations with the property owner at the existing facility to extend the lease. I would say at least for another year, I would be open to three years. And then we can get this figured out and actually have some public input in the meantime, maybe look into some of those code enforcement things and approach it from that angle.
I would second that.
We do have motion in a second, but we do have further discussion before we go on to the vote. Deputy Mayor Martinez?
Just a couple of questions to city staff. When ECO Northwest was interviewing stakeholders, can you identify who those stakeholders were?
So in the report.
And what the purpose was, I'm sorry, of identifying them?
So in the report, the ECO Northwest interviewed the service providers, and they interviewed the residents at the sleep center in terms of needs on both parts.
And did they interview businesses?
No. And the purpose there was to get an understanding of the people who were on the ground providing the services to this population and what their needs were, so that recommendations could be made in regards to the service provision that the city council could consider. I think it was also a point of theirs to interview the sleep center residents to get an understanding of what their needs were as well. In regard to the locations, this process put the locations out there for consideration, and that is one reason why we didn't, we couldn't go further into negotiations with the existing property owner. First of all, we had an email from August of 2021 where there was a restrictive covenant where the property owner had covenanted to the neighboring property owners that it would not be relocated within 2,000 feet of the existing site when we move. And secondly, this was a locational analysis for the city council so that you could have an independent third party evaluate, based on the input from the service providers, what made the best sense for you to evaluate in terms of a location.
Any additional?
We should also clarify the point-in-time count numbers. And so the numbers that I spoke about last night were the numbers for the report, but they're from the State Department of Commerce, and so they reflect a larger number.
Yeah, Allison was responding to a question off the cuff last night, and in the report, it refers to an aggregate number where the regional communities report together, and it was a number from the Department of Commerce. But if you guys want, I can share the actual point-in-time count numbers that were given to us just today via email for our community. The point-in-time count was held January 26th of this year. Four Grant County agencies provided the main sources of data, Renew, Hope Source, New Hope, and Housing Authority. So Hope Source in Grant County led the field count, while all four agencies compiled counts within their own clients and services. So here's the numbers reported by the county. So within the county, 81 unsheltered homeless adult individuals, 45 sheltered homeless. And then it's got, it's broken down a little more, you can see on the screen. And over there, the number that says number of households counted per area, that's for Moses, like 37 households, not individuals. And there's just a graph just showing, and then the report also points out that the prior two years were just difficult to capture during COVID. You know, some of them were getting assistance, some of the counts weren't done just because it was COVID. But this year, they're able to get back to the normal data. We just wanted to give you that information because it came up, but in terms of who else they interviewed, those four agencies were interviewed as part of the report to determine what kinds of needs would be needed over time, and they were looking at not just, you know, maintaining what we currently have, but if we were to go to some sort of, I was told transitional campus or some greater facility that provided all the needs over time, just to determine what those needs would be. But really, tonight, we were just looking at what can you do with the 1.4 or 5 million that was set aside, would not in any way break ground on a mental health facility. It would just be, you know, finding the permanent location, that's just one little piece of the bigger puzzle. But if you, you know, that's just all we're presenting tonight, was just the location piece, so, for the existing services to be moved or stay where they are.
So, and maybe I misunderstood Councilmember Swartz, but to clarify, we're not growing this program or this facility. We're basically either leaving it there or relocating it somewhere else with not really an intent to grow the program, or if I'm asking the question correctly. My understanding is, yeah, that if we have a building, it will facilitate checking in, it'll facilitate maybe these, some of these other services to have a place where they can talk quietly, confidentially, depending on the issue.
Yeah, the idea was a building that would just be the office, the restrooms, and maybe a couple offices to replicate what's currently being done in the very rundown rented trailers.
Right. There's no room for anything to be done in there. So I'd like to ask Chief Fur, sorry, and I'll put you on the spot. When you're looking at this and you're dealing with the homeless and the crime that's going on and all that, do you have a suggestion or a direction that you would recommend?
We need to have a sleep center so that we can enforce our camping ordinances. Where that happens at is your decision.
Well, you did have a particular place cited in our public safety meeting, but anyway, I think the final thing is, you know, we've had some very good discussion here, and we did yesterday with other members, some of them are here as well, community members. And again, the decision to be made is not whether or not we should have one, but where we should locate it or relocate it if we need to, because as I understand it from all of you out there, we don't want our camps full of, or parks, excuse me, full of homeless people. We don't want to have to step over them on public sidewalks, and I totally agree with that. The other thing that I've heard very clearly from all of you tonight and last night is that this really stems from a mental health and drug addiction issue, a lot of it does. And that's, again, not something that we're deciding tonight, and it's not necessarily something that the city should have to take responsibility for solely. So I appreciate your comments and your concerns, but that's a much bigger conversation that needs to be had with the county and also with the state, since they have created these issues of allowing drugs to be legal, allowing people to live in their cars in their broke-down RVs, and the city not being able to do some of the things that we would like to do because of the laws that we have to abide by. So I appreciate your comments and know that it is a difficult decision to make in the broader scope of things.
Councilmember Madewell?
So I have a question, and then I have a comment. The question is, if we own land straight down by where the existing shelter is at now, can we move the motorhomes down there now? Is that possible?
We'll have to explore the nature of the easement. There may be preclusions from blocking the easement in terms of access.
Okay. And then my comment is, is I do not want to see this to become a larger situation than what we have right now. I don't want it to grow. So whatever we need to do to keep it sadly the size that it is now, but I would prefer to see that it gets smaller instead of us setting up a situation where it's going to maybe grow and people are going to come. I am totally against that. Thank you.
Councilmember Skog.
I think there's a saying that you see a lot of times out in the Forest Services is, "Don't feed the bears." And it's a real simple one, but I think there's an element of the reality that, you know, I think when we're coming up with facilities, I think we can be humane, but I don't think it needs to be something that encourages somebody to stay there. I think the housing, there are people that just have housing needs, and we need to have compassion about that. But there's an awful lot of those people that want to stay there or choose a lifestyle, and I don't think we need to support that. The other thing is, from the comments made, I think we would be remiss in not admitting that, you know, as far as that report goes or that consultants didn't talk with the people who have to pay for it and have to live with it, and that's this group. So I think these comments should be a big part of that whole decision-making process.
So before we ask for the vote, I'd just like to make a comment. I don't want to rush into extending a lease that we may not be 100% pleased with. And my suggestion was to discuss with the property owner, with Hope Source, with our committee, and try to hash out some of these details and what we may need and what that might look like, and then negotiate the lease.
Mayor.
I just had one thought I wanted to make sure council had in their mind when they're reviewing this on the broader issue in terms of location, size, and length of a lease, if that's what you're contemplating. Under the Boise decision, one of the reasons that the Boise case, or the city of Boise, lost in defending their case was because their point in time count revealed a higher number of unhoused folks than there were available shelter spaces for. And so when you're talking about not wanting to grow the size of the facility, you have to bear in mind that if your point in time count does expand or grow in the future, your ability to enforce your anti-camping ordinances is contingent on having enough bed space for every one of those individuals. So I would just encourage you to, even though your priority may be aimed at not wanting to grow the facility, that's not something you have total control over in terms of your point in time count. So if it did expand, you'll need to be able to have that expansion capacity wherever you decide to locate the facility.
Councilmember Madewell.
So with that in mind, the people that are in Moses Lake, that live in Moses Lake, that are homeless, they could stay here. If people are coming in from other cities within the state of Washington, they have the same laws. Could we send them home to their city to be taken care of? Is that a possibility?
No.
Why?
Because we have a constitutional right to travel, and we cannot regulate the travel, interstate or interstate. So that would be a prohibition basically on freedom of travel. So it doesn't matter where their residency is. If they are here and they are unhoused, they will be counted in our pick count. And we can't enact regulations that would force them to travel someplace else or relocate.
So we do have a motion on the table. If there's no other discussion, I'd call for the vote. Do you want to restate your motion?
I could restate the motion, yes. Just to make it simpler then, I so moved that we enter into negotiations with the property owner where we are currently leasing space for the warming center to extend the lease. Mark already seconded it. Yeah.
And I believe this one would, due to the controversy, I'd like to do a roll call vote.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Eck.
Aye.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Aye.
Councilmembers Kog.
Aye.
Councilmember Fancher.
Aye.
Councilmember Madewell.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
Mayor Myers.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
So Mr. Richards, I definitely would like to discuss this with the committee and try to formulate what our needs are and what is going to fit our model. So if we could negotiate or work that out with the city staff, that'd be great. I appreciate you. Thank you for everybody and all your comments. We greatly appreciate it. Moving on to the DOH Associates Police Station Owners Rep Contract. Okay, council's asking for a break. If there's any students in the audience, we'll take a five-minute break. Come back at 9:01.
Recording in progress. You're welcome to stay for other business as well.
Did you sign them?
I will.
You will? Because, you know what?
Safe for you.
I said, "Why don't we have to ask the questions?" And they said, "Because you're the one." All those people are heckling me. What do you think my chances are?
If you could please find your seats.
Recording stopped.
It's 9:01. Let's do it beforehand. If we can get everybody to their seats, please, so we can proceed with the meeting. And now for the usual amount of visitors.
It's my dinner. It's not candy. It's dinner. Oh, my goodness.
Oh, right. It's a protein bar, right?
Yes.
Yeah, sure.
So it is 9:02. We resume the meeting and begin with the DOH Associates Police Station Owners Rep Contract presented by our city manager, Allison Williams.
Thank you. And actually, we had a team working on this. So at the February 14th regular meeting of the council, we introduced this topic in carrying out the construction of a major public project at city staff's recommendation that we utilize the services of an owner's representative. At the March 14th meeting, you asked for additional information. We heard from Larry Gangl, who is the recommended professional service provider. And there were questions about the duties of the architect, the duties of the owners' rep, the ability of a city staff person to provide the oversight. So staff put together a very comprehensive staff report. We sent that out to you in advance. It detailed out the scope of work of each of the entities, the role of each, and we used city or owners' rep interchangeably in those duties depending on the role there. In the cost analysis, there was the consideration of the DOH Associates and their average hourly rate in their contract amount. That was a three-year contract amount, and it included the cost of the special inspections that would be under their contract, but their average hourly rate of $112 an hour plus expenses. We did a comparative analysis of a staff member with the skills that would be required to carry out these duties. The hiring market right now for this position, if you were to go on the Association of Washington City's website and look for the number of entities that are looking for this expertise, there are many cities looking. And so we put in there the average salary based on our comparable cities, average cost of benefits. And so you have that before you. And then the question was having Raluda carry out the work in their average hourly rate. We noted that in the scope of work for Raluda, their current contract amount included 10 visits to the site, and with a 12- to 16-month construction timeframe for the project, that's less than one visit a month. And so our expectation for a project of this scope is the regular availability of the owner's representative to be on site and to be our representative in negotiating change orders, working with the contractors that's knowledgeable in the industry would be of benefit in a project that we are receiving state local bond dollars to construct. And so also as a part of your packet, in addition to the scopes of work, we provided some background in regards to the architectural and engineering fees, standard fees for public works, building projects, so that you could see that the fees were within range. And additionally, an example of WAC for districts requiring the owner's representative for a public project. Granted, it was a 50,000-square-foot project, and this is not that. But that's the professional reference and statutory guidance that we were using in making this recommendation. We do have our building official, Lee Craigblow, with us here this evening if you had any questions in regards to, you know, what they do and what this owner's representative and their experience with the owner's representatives through the Larson Recreation Center project. That was a very quick overview of the staff report. I'd look to our staff, Richard, Kirsten, anything that I missed in that. And hopefully, council in sending it out early and all of the documents early, you had time to digest that. We didn't receive any questions from you in advance. So, you know, we always like questions in advance so that we can be prepared to answer during the meetings. So. Any questions?
Councilmember Skog.
Did you have in there what the state guidelines were for fees, for architectural fees? I didn't see that.
Yeah. So that was the architectural and engineering document that we provided, and it provided the range of fees based on the service being provided.
Okay. And what page is that on?
It is in your packet. It is pages. 62 to... It's a long document. 74, 75. Kirsten's got it available.
Said 64?
I think my reticence in going with this whole deal, number one, starts with the chief. When we talked about doing this building, I was misunderstanding the concept of a cookie-cutter kind of a project. I was shocked when I heard that was a 20-year-old building. I thought that was a two- or three-year-old building. Well, I get that, and you say no, but the implication, or at least as my understanding, and maybe I'm wrong, but I thought it had just recently been built. Is this the one in Idaho?
Yeah.
And I can be absolutely wrong in my perception, but the thought was, we're going to cookie-cutter something. I thought we were going to talk to the architect that had done it and maybe even get some input from the general contractor who had built it and come up with a real accurate number short of two or three years' worth of inflated prices. So we're kind of, this is what we want. We can just kind of cookie-cutter this as we talked about even cookie-cutting another school, like Groff is another cookie-cutter. And at least in my mind, the implication should have been a 10% architectural fee is at the top end of the guidelines. And at least in my mind, the implication should have been a 10% architectural fee is at the top end of the guidelines. I think you'll find that to be true.
The range of services on page 64.
I think you just wrote past.
And it's the percent of basic services fee. So 18% for schematic design, 20 for design development, 31 for construction documents, two for bidding, 27% for construction and two for project management.
Go back up on page Ben.
Schematic, when they're talking, that's 18% of the fee.
And so for this project, we're at 10% for architect and 2% for.
I would have thought there would have been a significant savings in the architect, realizing that maybe the architect in Idaho was not licensed in Washington. Realizing that for an architectural firm to put their stamp on it, they've got to redo all the math anyway. But I thought it was a much more current project. And I think, I have no problem with the DOH involvement, but I don't think, I've talked to other project managers that would talk about a DOH being on board before the decision as to who the architecture firm is and negotiate what they're going to do and what they're going to do. And all that negotiation takes place at the DOH level as our representatives. And it seems like we've kind of got the cart before the horse. And I think there's this duplication that in my mind, we could have gotten all the DOH money out of that 10, out of, so we're going to have almost $2 million in just people watching people. And that, that just seems like a lot. And I, I'm convinced that if we do have, since we approved a $15 million project, I'm sure all of that will be spent. Now, having said that, the other money that was not negotiated upfront is going to mean the weight room might not have weights. But I mean, I mean, that 15 million, I don't, I'm not sure exactly how that number, you know, was generated, other than this was a building that's a relatively what we want. And we've got some good history about what it took to build it, when they were all done with all their change orders and all that stuff. And I feel a little bit misled in how that number came about in the project, whether we were going to cookie cutter this. And in my mind, I'm thinking there's some significant savings that could, should have happened. And I think we, I think we might have squandered some of those opportunities right off the gate, and we're going to end up paying for it at the end. Where we're going to go, oh, we don't have furniture for that room. So.
Well, and, and it has been our city's past practice to go to utilize the architect and then staff. We are at a point in the growth of the city where council provided us with direction that if you need help, ask for it. And so when I came on board and saw how far behind we were in that we were handling the Larson Recreation Center project, I said, we absolutely needed owners rep involved in this project. And so we followed that same course for the police station. Your suggestion is a good one, having an owners rep on board first. We're in the midst of changing those practices. And I should mention that we went through a process of schematic design and cost estimating, and that DOH did a review cost estimate for us and coming up with the price tag. The price tag was actually higher than the $15 million. However, during the budget process, we whittled down the square footage and the commensurate cost per square foot to get to the $15 million figure.
I mean, I guess that's just for future.
Yes.
And I think negotiate, I have a hard time with materials that have gone up 25% easy. That the process of specking that material, the cost of doing that, has not gone up 25%. The architect, you know, has not incurred 25% more cost in ink and phone and rental. So I'm thinking that as we've experienced this hyperinflation in the building industry, those margins that the architect should be charging should be getting smaller. And I think that, that's stuff that we should be negotiating right at the very beginning and have the, you know, whatever to, anyway. I think we missed an opportunity.
Well, I think that's what they're going to do. They're going to be looking at the materials and if they know something at a better price because they know the market and they know what's happening, that they can suggest a different material.
I think the negotiating was with the architects, not with them, not with what material we use. But anyway, that's, that's my two cents.
Councilmember Fancher.
Well, I was just going to say the same thing. I fully understand what Councilman Scog is saying. I mean, I think of it in my own industry because I work on a commission-based industry. As pricing has gone up, I mean, you used to hear all the time, go back a few generations with my dad and some others, 8, 10% was not unusual for a commission of a real estate deal. I can promise you, I wouldn't be here if I could get that.
Where would you be?
It was somewhere in the sun, I can tell you. But it's changed because the leverage of, and exactly to what Councilman Scog said is my hard costs of, because of what I do professionally is, doesn't go up with the cost of goods. And, and so I fully understand, and that was kind of the concern I've had since day one. And then I'm, same thing, I, and I guess we didn't ever ask, how old's the building? I kind of felt the same way, maybe not one or two years, maybe, but I was thinking within the last three or four or five years. It was a relatively new building that if I'd have known it was truly 20 years old, I probably would have said, I know that it's full architect. I mean, it's, we would have known. And it's just, I don't know how that got out. Well, I don't recall it, and he may have. I'm not going to say he didn't, but I don't, I just don't recall the age being brought up. Because it was talked about like this will work perfect.
Councilmember Scog, you mentioned a duplication of oversight, but I've noticed since COVID, all the good employees left. And now you're stuck with some subpar employees that the quality of work across all manufacturing and construction has decreased. So having those set of eyes watching the project to catch those problems before they are so far gone that it costs us time and money. I think it's a benefit to us in expediting the building process and making sure we get a good, quality product.
Deputy Mayor Martinez.
I wanted to give Chief R. an opportunity to talk because it looked like he was going to say something regarding, I had understood that it was an older building, but maybe because I've met with you over at the police station when you were showing the plans.
Yeah.
And I think Judy had met with you. Our councilmember Maydwell had.
And I don't know that I mentioned how old it was. I just mentioned that the floor plan, the layout is exactly what we were looking for, the way it was set up. And even the exterior look with that brick and glass, it fits with the other buildings in the city that are newer. And so that, that was, I actually have the blueprint, the actual blueprints, the whole thick pack that I gave to the architect. And I said, here's the plans. We want to model our new building off of this. So he has those architect plans, but they're 20 years old. And I, of course, I'm not in the building, I'm not in the building world. I don't know what's changed and what hasn't changed. But I gave him the whole set of plans and said, here you go. This is what we model, want to model it off of. Now, it is, our building's a little bit bigger than theirs. So we moved a little bit of the walls, but by and large, the layout is what post falls is at. And that's what we were looking for. So. So shame on me for not mentioning that it was, it was, it was built a couple of years before I started at Rathrum, which was 2006. So.
So can I clarify then? So it sounds like it would be good to do this, but what, if I'm understanding you correctly, Councilmember Scog, is that in the future, when we have another capital project like this, that we, I don't know what that means, but anyway. That, that we, that we have the DOH or somebody like them negotiating. Even the architecture. Just wanted to make sure that I understood you correctly. Sure, sure, sure. Well, they can fundraise for the, for the weights. So it, it sounds like we're in favor of this then.
Councilmember Swartz.
Yeah, just because I do have some experience with this, I thought I'd weigh in. You know, there are several different methods to getting a proposal for a building from a contractor. And so another thing to consider in the future would be to do what's called the bitter design, bitter build, or, you know, design-build type of situation. So in that case, the general contractor would be responsible for coming up with the design within a set of parameters. And so I believe that that is the, one of the mechanisms where you can achieve the most cost savings. Because I understand the dog and pony show that people can do if they're from DOH or any other entity that does this. And they'll come in and say, well, we, we saved all this money on this project. What effectively happens in those meetings is that the general contractor and his supply team comes up with the solution. And then the guy from DOH gets to say, well, this is, this is the solution now. But if you go through the bitter design, bitter build process, a lot of that gets handled before even, you know, the first shovel goes in the ground. So that's another thing to consider too. I think maybe some of the discussion that Councilmember Scog was trying to have earlier is what is the established sort of norm as far as what a fee is? And I've always understood it to be 10% or somewhere around there. I've heard 8% as well. Now, you know, 20 years ago, the hiring of a construction manager was not nearly as common as it is today. I think we should all ask ourselves why that is, first of all, because the fact is, building construction fundamentally hasn't changed. You start with a flat piece of ground and you go up. That's how that works. So I don't know why we need this other layer of bureaucracy in today's world, but we should be very careful when we're spending money on it. I mean, why is this to begin with? And so, you know, the 10% probably should be the architect and this firm, not plus two more percent. That's the problem that I have with it. And 2% doesn't sound like a lot, but when you look at $15 million, it is a lot of money. So, you know, if there was any way that we could cut that number down, that would be great. But unfortunately, because of the way that things have gone and in the order that they have happened, we're kind of stuck. I don't like it. So, you know, this isn't a kumbaya moment for me. It's just, we need to move forward. That's all I have.
Deputy Mayor Martinez.
If I understand the contract correctly, they're giving us a certain amount of hours, right? And they're charging this, us a certain dollar amount. But maybe it'll work to our favor. They don't have to have, use all those hours. Is that correct? We're not stuck at that number. If it, if it's determined that.
Yeah. If it's determined that they can do the work with fewer hours, then that's what they're going to get paid for is the number of hours worked, correct?
Yeah. For the DOH contract, it's the number of hours built.
Well, is there, is there a stipulation that there not be more hours? Because it can work the other way, yes.
The contracts, these, and this is typical for consultants, architects, engineers, and a lot of service contracts that we have. We negotiate, we receive proposals based upon their hourly rates. And then they estimate the time it's going to take to do their work. But they only bill us their actual hours. And the contract is a not to exceed number. So we have a contract where we agree, if, if you work enough hours to bill us up to $10, we'll pay up to $10. After that, we have to renegotiate the contract to go beyond that.
So we have a say.
Yes. So both the architect and the owners rep, those contracts are written the same way where it is a, an established billing rate not to exceed a certain number. And if, if they want to go beyond that, then we have to negotiate that extension.
So I, I understand the concern about having to pay somebody to watch the project. I do get that. But I also hear city staff saying that they're not able to do it, one, because that's not their expertise and, and it will take away from the current work. You know, if I were building something that I had, or having something built for me that I had no idea or knowledge about, I would want somebody to oversee it as well. Especially as Mayor Myers mentioned, you know, the, the quality of work. And, you know, people are struggling financially, which leads me to not necessarily trust everybody to be on the up and up when they're doing work. So I know it's not something that we want to have to pay for, but I think that it's, it's an investment for the city of Moses Lake ultimately.
Councilmembers Scog, or sorry, Swartz.
We use the DOH on the rec center, correct? How many hours did they save or a percentage of what they proposed?
So the DOH contract for the Larson Recreation Center was a shorter duration. Because when I got here, we were already through schematic design. So they came in at the time of the bid and worked through that process.
So as far as there, but as far as the percentage they've used to date of the original contract, we have not, I, I do not have that number in front of me right now. But the last time I looked at the bill, I don't recall us being bumping up against the number yet.
We can get that number for you.
Councilmember Scog.
Richard, would you, I didn't understand that not to exceed concept. If, if we're 75% done and they've run out of the hours they quoted, they're going to tell us how much they're going to, how much they're going to, we're going to renegotiate a bill for, to finish the project?
So, and that's, and that's part of the oversight that when we're, we receive those bills every month.
Right.
From the architect. And so as part of what we're doing, we're monitoring how quick are the hours going? You know, and, and if we're getting to the point where we're bumping up against the ceiling, then before we get there, we have a conversation. What's going on? Why are we, what, are you experiencing problems? Explain to me why we're, we're getting close to the number, because we don't, we don't want to get there. And so that's part of oversight by the city to make sure that those hours are, are lasting the way we think they should.
But if they aren't, I mean, I've done jobs, I'm at 130% of my labor budget, and I don't get a dime more than my not to exceed number. So I'm trying to wrap my head around the concept of not to exceed.
So we're, they have, they have a contractual obligation to fulfill certain things. And so if they're starting, they're getting close to their number, then I want to have a conversation to figure out what's going on. Has something changed? They can't bill beyond that. They're still contractually obligated to, to do their job. So if, if, if we're going to, if we're going to pay them beyond that, they've got to justify it and, and make a case to the city of why they're going to bill more or why they would like to bill more. And then we, we ultimately, they still have to fulfill their contractual obligations. So if ultimately they can't prove that there was some sort of exigent circumstance that necessitates a contract extension, we can, we can still hold them to their contract. You got to perform and they'll, they'll eat the cost. But before they get there, you know, I'm going to be looking, we're going to be looking at the number to say, okay, we're 75% done with the project, but you billed for 85% of your hours. What's going on? You know, let me know. So that if, if they're going to try to make a case for more money, then we can talk about it before we ever get there and we have, have some sort of a contract failure to perform or something like that, where we have to go into either enforcement or, you know, trying to get out of the contract or something like that.
Not to exceed arrangement. I make a motion that we accept.
I make a motion that we accept.
If, if the project goes over the allotted number of days for completion, is there anything written into the contract that the DOH would be subject to liquidated damages as well?
No, I have, no, I've never seen that in one of, as far as liquidated damages.
So they have no penalty whatsoever? They, and then basically, if that were to happen, then they would be coming back to say, well, the project isn't done, so we need more money?
The, the, the provisions for liquidated damages are normally with the construction, not with the construction oversight.
Do you think that's a problem?
Uh, no.
I think we beat that then. I, I make a motion that we accept DOH's proposal.
We have a motion to second any other discussion. We've discussed this quite thoroughly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nate?
Six to one. Councilmember Swartz in the opposition. Motion passes. New Business 2023 Budget Amendment Ordinance 3021, presented by Madeline Prentice.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So this evening, we've changed the format a little bit of the budget amendments. Previously, we would present budget amendments to you twice a year. I'd like to start presenting these on a quarterly basis to you instead. And so this first one this evening is the first budget amendment for the first quarter. It includes some corrections to the budget, as was approved last year for the 2023 budget. It also includes some new projects that came forward, that were part of projects that were included initially in the initial budget that came through. But when we, when we got through them, Public Works, they had included them in other projects that were ultimately denied and taken out of the budget. There was pieces of them that had to be included in there. And so there's a number of these that, that are related to that. The general liability insurance, when it came through at the beginning of the year, we had budgeted for a 40% increase per our insurance, our liability insurance carrier, and it actually came in a little bit higher than that. So that one impacts a number of the departments, and so this budget request, budget amendment, adjusts for that increase in the liability insurance that we received. And then there was some staffing changes that were brought to you earlier this year for the Community Development Department. Those are included in here as well. And then there was a couple of items that were some new initiatives, grants, for example, the SAFER grant that you approved earlier this year. That was not included in the 2023 budget, so those numbers are included in this budget amendment, as well as the grant that was awarded, or that you accepted at the end of the year for the Fire Department for the alternative response member. That one came in later, after the budget was approved. So those are also included in here. All of the information was provided in the packet, so if you have any questions on any of the particular amendments that came through, I would answer those questions for you now.
And as a regular course of business, we're reviewing these budget amendments with the Finance Committee.
Right.
And talking through those on a regular basis.
Councilmember Madewell?
So on the last page, 183, on the building maintenance, the cap of $500,000. Can please explain that?
On that one, what happened was, there was two projects that the building maintenance put through. One was for the solar array and the zero scapeing for the Civic Center complex, as well as the space analysis. Those were two projects that were identified in the building maintenance capital requests. And unfortunately, what happened was, when the budget was rolled up, that money did not get put into the building maintenance budget, and that money needs to come from the general fund, a transfer from the general fund. And so that, this is to amend that budget, to include the cost for those two projects in the building maintenance. And also, there's a transfer from the general fund to building maintenance to cover the cost of those two projects.
So when I look at these numbers, excuse the expression, but we're in the hole, $4,277,000. It's a lot of money.
It is.
It's a lot of money. A lot of money.
So we should mention that for a number of these, again, it was bringing forward grant dollars.
Right.
And so we were also bringing forward the expense for grants that we've applied for. So for example, the one that you just identified in the building maintenance, we just hit send last week on the grant that was co-written with McKinstry. And hats off to our team in the Facilities Division for the solar and battery project for this facility. And so we just, we have to identify the expense, and that project was grant-dependent. And so we're just providing for it to be there, and then we would report back on the grant dollars being received.
So what's the annex-based analysis? Tell me what that is.
So again, work with the work that you've authorized through McKinstry in all of our building analysis. So next door, in the Civic Center Annex, we have added employees, and so they're doing an efficiency analysis of that building. And where we could utilize their access to energy efficiency dollars to reconfigure the space, again, that would be additional grant dollars. And so they need to do the analysis first. So we're reflecting the cost of that.
Councilmember Swartz?
Yeah, on the solar panel project, I don't think I've really seen much of that. Do we have information on what the payoff period is for that, and when we can expect to generate revenue from those, or cut the...
Certainly, we can, we can provide the analysis.
All right.
Deputy Mayor Martinez?
Going to the liability insurance, I think I recalled in our budget workshop, because our rates keep going up, we had asked that you look into another insurer. And I believe that that was agreed upon. I was just curious if you're doing that.
That was not in regards to our, our property and liability insurance.
Oh, okay.
There was a discussion in regards to the airport specifically. So the increases that you're seeing are a result of our experience.
Right.
And this is the experience that we incurred in 2019. And additionally, the ability to reinsure on the part of our insurer for police liability and cybersecurity, those costs continue to go up, so.
My apologies, I misunderstood. I, I thought that I had asked that we at least look at another provider for what you just said.
And that's not, not our understand, not, I don't remember that.
Is there another provider?
I don't either, no.
I mean, I recognize that, yeah, they're, they're coming at us with higher rates because of everything that occurred here in Moses Lake a few years back. And, yeah, that, that's how I understood my request to you, recognizing that we might have trouble finding a more affordable insurer, but to, to look at that. You know, when my home insurance is due for, to be renewed, you go out and look for, you know, to see if there are better rates. There may not be, but...
Yeah, this is, it's a, for cities, it is a much more complicated process, and I think you were going to jump in on regard to that.
So cities aren't eligible for regular insurance. There are three pools statewide that provide coverage for cities that you can be a member of. We're with Washington Cities Insurance Authority, WCIA. The other one is Clear Risk Solutions. And the third one is through AWC, it's the RMSA program. And those are the three options. There are no other, there are no other options. So we, you know, we can get quotes, but they are going to base our premium on our risk rating, which right now, because we're coming in after we have had several claims, our risk rating is not going to be reflected, it will, it will be reflected in what we're quoted. So, I mean, we, we can get quotes from those other two pools, but because everybody is sharing risk with the other pool members, the premiums reflect your risk rating as a member of the pool. The other thing to keep in mind is, two of the pools, WCIA and the RMSA, are limited to cities. The third pool, Clear Risk, has expanded their pool to include school districts, tribes, counties, irrigation districts, a number of homeowners associations, nonprofits. So the, the risk pool is a different animal than the other two pools.
And, and I would just also give a plug for our current insurer. I had, you know, 20 years of experience with the other insurer. The level of service that WCIA provides is amazing in comparison. And Chief Fuhr is on the Executive Committee. The advocacy that they provide for us on a legislative basis, recognizing that the legislative changes that are made, particularly with regard to policing, are a huge liability for potential claims for us. And then the ongoing risk training that they provide to us, and the annual audit that they provide, I, I've been very impressed with our experience with WCIA. Given that, you know, there, there is a price for that service, and so if that's something that we want to explore, it, it does take some time, and there's a, there's a notice process, and then the transition actually can't occur for a year to 18 months. So, and, and given our current risk profile, I concur with our city attorney, it would not necessarily be a good time for us to look right now.
Do you have any idea when we're going to get out of that, from underneath that dark cloud of what happened years ago?
It's a, it's a rolling five-year timeline.
It's a what?
Rolling five-year time, so a five-year look back.
Okay, thank you.
I, I was just going to add, the, the training aspect of it is invaluable. They do training, they have training videos, it is, and the training is amazing. We've brought them here to Moses Lake several times, free of charge, and been able to, to train our staff, our entire staff. And, and the last thing I would add is, I met with the executive director just a couple of months ago, and asked her about how many agencies leave or come onboard with WCIA. They have very, very few that leave. She did mention one that left, and within a year or two, they were asking to come back. So, great program. They, they are run very well.
Any other discussion on this item? Do you need a motion to approve Ordinance 3021?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Administrative reports? Almost done.
Our first item is the police annual report.
I'll make this very quick. So at the public safety meeting, I gave copies of our annual report. I am going to, tomorrow morning, we will post it. I would just mention a couple of things real fast. We put a use-of-force report in there. It's two pages this year. It includes our entire annual use-of-force report, including even some of the recommendations that we've, that we realized during some of the forces. So take a look at that. We added a section in there on the community support. Blue Bridge was added this year. So if you get a chance, take a look at it. We're very proud of it. We're proud of the statistics and proud of our, I couldn't be more proud of our employees for the work that they do. So just take a look. If you have questions, give me a call.
The next item is our SR17 paving and delay.
So this last week, I was contacted by the North Central Region Construction Office, and they informed me that due to, they are, their engineering staff is so far down this year, they have nobody to run the project. And so they are going to delay the, the paver on Highway 17 that we talked about from 2023 to 2024. So.
Can we get delayed?
I don't know. Supposedly, supposedly, they have a contractor.
It's their problem.
And they have requested time on a future agenda to come talk about their work on I-90, including the, the Vantage Bridge. So we're scheduling that for April.
And I remember you make, mentioning potentially... Potentially including the roundabout at Highway 17 in Yanazawa into their project? If that, because I know that that was around the timeframe to complete that project, if they could do it all at the same time?
There, there could be some exploration, provided that we're ready to go on the roundabout.
The, again, the biggest, we're, we're working on getting the design portion, we have some grant monies to do the design portion, and we're trying to get that done this year. The main thing is, we would have to secure the funding for the actual construction of the roundabout, which is still going to be in the, based on the construction at Grape Drive. That roundabout, just the roundabout itself, they paid $2.5 million for that. And we would also be needing to do the onsite road and utility construction to get back up to where the grade school is. And so our, our conservative estimate that we had late last year was, it was probably going to be, with inflation prices the way they're going, probably close to $4 million.
There was no possibility of cost sharing, since they're paving through there already?
Right, right now, because this is proposed by the City of Moses Lake, and it's not required by any safety concerns at the existing Yanazawa intersection. The only thing that this state said that they could do is waive their review fees. They've offered that.
I thought this was suggested by the state, the last time they did a presentation.
That, when we went through the intersection control evaluation for the, the 20-year design life of this intersection, it basically, it's required that we have to put in, that a roundabout's the only thing that will work for that long of a design life, based on the, the development we'd like to see on the, on the other side of Highway 17. So it's required, and they are going to be building a roundabout at Randolph and 17. Their estimate, it's, it's been funded, and I think they're saying that that might be a 25 or, 2025 or 2026 construction to do that. So they're, they're all in favor of it, but they don't have any money to give us for this. The only thing that we have a commitment of is, they will review all of their review fee, they will waive all of their review fees for this project. I, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
We're not going to get any of that income on the other side of the highway unless that access is there.
Correct.
But, but the timing, I think the timing with them being teed up for our project, you put a project out like, like this for bid, there could be some efficiencies in the bid from the same contractor. So hopefully, that timing might, it's work out, maybe.
Councilmember Swartz, go ahead.
No, I think you guys had covered it. I was just hoping to see a roundabout there by like November this year, but whatever. We can wait.
The last item is, we have final interviews for Technology Services Director. The last item is, uh, we have final interviews for technology services director. Don, I know you wanted to be involved, and we're looking at Monday, April 10th in the morning. Is that a time that will work for you? We would love another council member to participate on that panel. But it's a Monday morning. Judy? Okay, great. Um, we did extend out the municipal services director recruitment for another three weeks, and we're gonna put it out again. It's just. We, we have a few applicants, um, and so we're in the process of reviewing those. Want to extend, and we've got some feelers out there. And frankly, the, um, the governor's visit that happened today is just gonna elevate what's happening in this area. And the hope is that will help us with our recruiting too, because we've got some really cool stuff going on here. And I would think the municipal services director position would be, you know, the one to be in the thick of all this cool stuff that's coming our way. So. What's that? That's not my MO. That's, that's my pet peeve is a warm body. When we're looking, I'm looking. Adleness is not my friend.
Is that it for the administrative reports? Okay, moving on to the council committee reports. We'll start with Councilmember Swartz.
Thank you. I know you all love hearing from me. We have an AGCT meeting on Thursday. You're not required, but you are encouraged to attend, the rest of the council members. And in fact, I do need at least one more, because as the president, it's tacky, if nothing else, for me to vote. Um, and we only have one voting member per city. So. It will be at Guard Public House, I believe, in Royal City. There's a, there's a meal that comes with it. You could be my date. Okay. Is it too late to RSVP? I'm sorry, I'm making promises with that. Thank you, David.
Councilmember Madewell?
I don't have anything at this time.
Councilmember Fancher?
Uh, EDC meeting, uh, I don't know, it seems like yesterday, but maybe it was last Wednesday. Anyway, uh, just, they're going through a lot. Plus, they're also going through, uh, their feasibility, uh, on their, for their membership right now and being out, uh, talking to, um, and interviewing the community right now about, uh, the viability as well as, uh, getting feedback regarding the EDC. We had a CMP meeting today, also, Community Development Municipal Services Parks meeting. Talked about, uh, water conservation, um. Gosh dang, code update, I'll get to it. Looked at some different things. I think we had a pretty good discussion. Talked about, uh, maybe some things that need to be tweaked and changed and different things on that. Looking at it from all directions. Also, uh, that was an interesting topic, sewer infill. Now we might know what that means, right? No? So we talked about quite a few things, uh, in regards to infrastructure. And then also talked about some of the SEBA processes going on right now and talking about, uh, bringing the council speed on, uh, what we're doing and, and also the development community, make sure they're part of the process.
Councilmember Eck?
Yes, the port is continuing to do very, very well. The seven, 37 MAXs are still there, and they're gonna be there for a while longer. There's a new battery company looking. And, um, I have forgotten the name of the organization, but there's, uh, an update of some people coming from Japan at the end of April, as well as July. And that's it for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Scott? Deputy May Martinez?
Lobby day was canceled. Uh, the watershed council did meet at Vanguard Academy, and the project was, um, blew out algae in the cyanico bacter, or as they termed it, cyanico batter. And, um, how, and the project entailed them coming up with some solutions. And, um, some of the projects were really, um, thoughtful in, in their, um, approach. As I tend to be, I also, uh, maybe educated them a little bit about our, uh, limited water resources. Because one of the options was to take water out of one of our water towers to clean the lake. And so, I mean, I appreciated their thoughts, you know, but yeah. And then also, uh, it was interesting. We definitely have some recreational-minded students that did those projects, and they were talking about tourism. But I also, um, wanted to explain how the tourism and tourism dollars that we, the city gets and how that provides services to them. So, so that they can make that connection about, um, you know, that it's just not, you know, fishing and boating, but what that means in, in dollar sense. Because I think kids should get to learn about those things early, not later. And then, uh, public safety committee, um, our chief Bastian, and I forget his, um, sidekick, I shouldn't say sidekick, um, his, his passenger. They're going on a little road trip to bring back a vehicle. I thought it would be a pretty good idea for them to, you know, occasionally do a Facebook Live and let us know how that's going. And, um, there was also conversation about, um, should we potentially, um, have a facility, um, that is a fire facility that is geared more towards those hazardous businesses, hazardous, uh, chemicals and stuff that we deal with. So, um, if I understand correctly, they are going to be doing a little bit of research and going to some of these places that have those specific facilities, since we've got so much industry coming in and, and that's already here, to my, maybe address that in a specific nature. Yep.
So we had our GTA board retreat. Talked about our battery electric buses and all the issues that our, uh, maintenance team is finding on them. And luckily, we haven't accepted them, so they're, uh, making them fix it all. So, um, glad that they found those before. They are our problem. The other thing that we talked about was expanding our maintenance facility to accommodate, um, working on these electric buses and, and some of the other fleet. Currently, uh, the maintenance facility can only work on two buses at a time. And that, that's bottlenecked before. So the building was already designed to be expanded. So now's the time and to have the funding to do it. So. That is all I have. Uh, next regular council meeting is April 11th. We're gonna postpone the executive session, so meeting is adjourned.